All right, we have eight o'clock. I will call the meeting door. Can everyone stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, first up is public discussion. Do you want to come up to the podium?
The secret thing, like the lighting on stuff.
Yep, thanks.
I'm Galen Casey. I farm across from Section 12 Sherman, down by Laverne. And my neighbor just illegally tiled fifty acres, and my supervisor knew about it, and the tile still got done. If you told me you were in talking with the engineer, correct? How come when I went into the engineer's office yesterday, you never called him until seven o'clock Friday night? And I talked to you around four thirty that night, three thirty, four o'clock. And when I talked to Tyler yesterday, he said he didn't know nothing about it until seven o'clock Friday night. So I explained to him what was done. And he agrees with me, and I talked to Roger about this, because two weeks ago you told me you were going to bring it to the board for their attention, because there's another illegal one you told me being done down the west bend. And then you made the mistake and told me that he's a really nice guy. I used to work for him. He's a good guy. So why didn't you stop him? Because according to Tyler, and according to Roger, Tyler said he just assumed they'd tear every piece of that tube out of the ground. Because if you go cut it, midnight tonight, I can go back in, hook it back up. You rip over it again, you never know I hooked it back up. And he told me you told, you didn't know about it until after it was done. I first called you October twenty-fourth, when the tiling machines came in. So you've known about it since the twenty-fourth. And you said you're going to drive by. Actually, you were driving by past my mom's, and you went and looked at it. And you said you're going to talk to him before he started. It'd be easier to stop him ahead of time instead of afterwards fixing it. Well, it's done. And you told me that he was trying to put laterals in between the old tile, and Tyler knew nothing about it. He knows absolutely nothing. So why did you tell me you were looking into it and doing all this? What did you do?
So I guess, Galen, that the first time I talked to Tyler was not seven o'clock on Friday night.
Tell me. That I wouldn't lie to me.
Okay. It was before seven o'clock on Friday night, but...
Was it Friday night?
It was Friday afternoon.
Okay.
When I sent him the maps.
You told me that you already talked to him. You were in talking with the engineer, working out, seeing all you could do.
But Tyler has not, had not looked at it, but I guess can we explain here? I went and looked at what Mark Fair was doing there. And he is splitting the existing lines, and I saw his map. I saw the county map. It's being sent to the engineer. And I talked to Tyler, and Tyler said that did the right thing as far as he was in progress. And he is not draining any water there in a different direction than it was already going. There was already lines there draining from outside the district into the district. He is splitting those existing lines and tiling, improving the tile that's there.
I farmed it for seventy-six years. I know which way the tile runs.
I, I know, I know you did, and...
I told you where some stuff was, didn't I? Yes. I know that farm.
Yes, I know you do.
We dealt with it for years, that mud hole, and I always wanted crucial with threadings to go in and tile it. And the guy says, "You can't because your water's got to go east, not southwest." And you look at the lines you put in there, and they go like this.
Galen, if you want to talk about a specific issue for a significant amount of time, we will put it on the agenda. We will discuss it that way. Public discussion is not time to go back and forth.
Yeah, put me on the agenda for next week.
Okay, well, what topic, what details?
Sherman twelve, illegal tiling in the corner, northeast corner of Sherman twelve. And I'm going to go talk to the NRCS right now, so put on also illegal pond on Section twelve of, or Section one of Sherman. That's putting hydraulics pressure on me and the neighbor's tile, and it wrecked our farms this year.
Do you want two separate agenda items? Do you want it all in one?
You could just put two different ones. As long as you put them back to back for me. I appreciate it, please.
Yeah, we just needed the information and we'll...
So one is Sherman one is the illegal pond, and Sherman twelve is the illegal tile.
Okay.
Your opinion doesn't make it illegal, so we will discuss the agenda language, but...
Yeah, thank you.
Take it, thank you. Anything else for public discussion?
Morning. My name's Kurt Nielsen, and I'm here on behalf of the Cassuth County Feds forever. Prior to your meeting, two weeks ago, and it's on the agenda today. But just on our behalf, I'd like you to know that we're very, very excited about this possible land purchase to our county. We have been active, Cassuth County have been active for over forty years. Since our inception, inception, we have contributed funds for the purchase of over sixteen hundred acres of public ground here in Cassuth County. Acres include federal, state, and county-owned property. We also provide funds for the habitat management of the above entities. These public lands are not only open to hunting, but they also offer a variety of recreational opportunities, which include fishing, hiking, bird watching. Public lands should be open for all legal activities and not be subject to unwarranted restrictions. Our board wants to make the commitment of thirty-five thousand dollars to this purchase. That alone is the largest cash donation we have made towards the purchase of land in our forty-year history. That's how important we feel this piece of property is. The chapter of support also makes additional funds through our Pheasants Forever state organization. And it's kind of like the Habitat stamp. They kind of rate it. But there could be a possible match of that thirty-five thousand through our state. And we also then go around to the surrounding chapters that about us, and we have contributed to other chapters. So there could be additional funds from other chapters in the area. And there are a couple of reasons why we want to invest this kind of money into this purchase. It's an established piece of ground. It's already got habitat management pieces on it, such as native grasses. There is probably some, I think there are some ponds out there. I've not been on the piece, but I've driven by it, and I've kind of seen what it's all about. And it's also in a great location. Up north, there's a lot of federal ground, WPA for the public. There is a few areas in the southern part of the county, but it isn't like a lot. And we would like to kind of even all that out for opportunities for the people in the southern half of the county. Chapter encourages board supervisors to approve this purchase requested by the county conservation and allow them the opportunity to provide additional recreational land for all of the public to enjoy. So, thank you for your time.
Yep, thank you. Is there anyone else for public discussion?
Well, I don't know. Does anybody else have anything?
You can come up if you want.
Well, no, I just want to know about the budget discussions and stuff that we, I didn't know the proper time that you were...
We haven't scheduled anything yet.
No, but I wanted to know, like, when do you plan on doing that, and to what extent, I guess, is all I want to know.
We could talk about that during board discussion.
Okay, do you think that'll be before ten o'clock today?
Judging by our agenda, possibly, because we have a secondary road lighting rate of ten, and that's just before it, so...
Okay, very good. So then we can wait and talk about it then?
Perfect, yep.
Okay.
That worked. Anything else for public discussion? All right, if not, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda in minutes. Okay, is there a second?
No, second.
All right, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carried unanimous. Next up is a handwritten claim. Tammy, do you want to talk about that at all?
Um, it's for postage, yeah.
Okay. Is there any questions? If not, entertain a motion. All right, I'll second that.
Who's that, Jack?
Jack, yep. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carried unanimous. Transfers. They are in our folder here, our secondary roads. Any questions or comments on them? No. All right. Let the record reflect. We acknowledge those transfers. Monthly update from Secondary Road Forum. Good morning. What do you guys know today?
I'm getting rolling in shape.
No.
Getting warm and grumming. Getting ready for winter.
Ready to help. Pardon?
Ready to help.
Yes. Got a little bit of chance tomorrow again, so let's see what happens.
Have either of you guys been up R fourteen anytime recently?
You talking about the shoulders?
Yeah.
You're doing it today.
Perfect, that's awesome. Got a text about that. I was curious, so... That's good. Any, anything else you guys want to highlight, or questions from the board?
Same old stuff. Get ready for winter.
All right.
Got to eat ham first, though. Where you put the wingfuls on.
Okay.
Yep. Well, sounds good. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
KRHC monthly update. Morning.
Good morning. Good morning. Just a shout out for the two of you gentlemen that are retiring. Thank you for your, your significant years of service to Cassuth County. So I just heard a reflection yesterday at our ZO ring board meeting, and while I don't have it memorized, I'll probably poorly state it. But in essence, what it, what it says, it frames that, you know, we have an opportunity to vote once a year. But we have an opportunity to vote locally every single day by the amount of volunteerism that we do within our communities. It helps us choose how our communities proceed and how successful we are as a community, so... But that was a pretty cool thing, and, and your work is, does not go unnoticed, so we appreciate that for all of you. Given that it's November already, hard to believe, we observe, of course, a no meeting in December, so we're not going to be here to report out in December. But I'm going to let, let talk about a couple of things that we're working on now.
Yeah, so yeah, we just went through our audit in the last month for our last fiscal year, and that was clean. So that was all, all a good, just for the first three, three months of this fiscal year, just doing well. Business as usual. Our, our in, our inpatient seems to be lower than it has been in prior years. But I'm, I'm sure going into the cold months that, that, that'll pick up. Two things that we're working on right now at the end of the year are payer contract negotiate. And so the big one right now is HUMANA, which is a Medicare ad, advantage plan. So us, as well as MIR, as MIR C one, are working to reach an agree, agreement here by, by the end of the year. Really, the goal of that is to be paid fair. We've had a lot of issues with Medicare ad, advantage plans in terms of a lot of de, ni, de, niles, a lot of prior off the D, delays that, delay care. So really just working to be paid fair, and being paid fair means getting paid the same as traditional Medicare. So really working and hoping that we, that, that we can reach an agreement with them by the end of the year. And then, and so that, that Medicare advantage plan is our second big, biggest plan that we have at the hospital. And then the other one is TRICARE, which is a product for military service members and their fam, 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 families. So that's a smaller population, but definitely an important one. So hoping to reach an agreement with them as well by, by the end of, of the year. And really just kind of the same thing, really working to get paid what we deserve to be paid. And for that, that would be to at least be paid for the cost to provide the service. So right now, we're looking at getting a, getting paid less than the cost would be to provide the service. And obviously, if every insurance payer did that, we would not be in bid, bid, bid business. So just working to hopefully reach an agree, agreement with them. So all fun stuff. So, any questions for us?
Your operating margins and cash flow are good?
Yeah.
Yeah, cash position is pretty good.
It's all good. We work hard to ensure that continues. To extent that we can control.
Right.
Thank you, your...
Well, thank you, yeah. Appreciate it.
Having the...
Yes.
We really do.
We really do. Very, very lucky, yeah. Very fortunate. Happy to help very well.
Have a good day. Have a good day. Stay warm.
All right, next up is the Fenton Library update.
Hey, good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. Got a little something to pass out for Buddy, and...
Thank you.
Thank you. I can't, I'll have a newsletter maybe if we can just pass this down so I don't take up time. Okay, I just wanted to give a little update on the Fenton Library, but I wanted to start by thanking you again for restoring the library funding. It is allowing us to stay open for another year. As you know, things were a little dire in Fenton. So we are very, very happy to be able to still be in business, and we thank you greatly for reconsidering and for restoring that funding. What I was going to share with you right now is just my little annual report that I do every year. And it worked out rather nicely that I came when I did, because we have a report that we need to do for the state library every year in order to receive our state funding. And that's our annual report. So if I can just turn you on your little brochure there to the page that says, "Library Overview", looks like this right here. I'm going to look at that first. So this was completed for the state library, so we have a very rigorous series of things that we need to go through every year, and a lot of data crunching to figure out what's going on. So I just kind of took the fillet of that and put that in our little library overview for the fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four. So just to give you a little information here, you can see the library collection. We're currently at eleven thousand six hundred and ninety-four items, which is quite a bit for a library with a town of two hundred and seventy-one. And then we also support Lone Rock, which is about around one fifty, I believe, thereabouts. So we are the library for both of those towns. Our circulation is three thousand one hundred and sixty-three items were checked out. Eight hundred and sixty-one ebooks were downloaded, and we had six hundred and forty-two interlibrary loan transactions. And what that is, is the state of Iowa has this great program called Iowa Shares. And we are able to share books across libraries all over the state. And we have frequent requests from people to look for books in different places. We also have our book club, so we're asking to borrow twenty-nine books from different libraries every month to our book club. This is an increase of over a thousand items from the previous year as far as circulation. We have three hundred and sixty-seven active library cards, which is pretty exciting, because those are active cards. And like I said, with two hundred and seventy-one people, hundred and fifty. And then we also have some people that are rural and other areas that do service our library, have cards there. The next item is door count, and that's a big deal with the libraries. That's one of the things the annual report needs to keep track of. And that's anyone who comes in through our door. So at the Fenton Library, we had five thousand two hundred and twenty-nine people come through our doors last year. And that is almost, let's see, about eight hundred and twenty more than last year. So we continue to have very active library and people who are very, very supportive of us. Reference technology and service interactions, that's anytime I'm helping somebody with whether they need to know how to set up their phone, if they need to know how to research, maybe they need support, trying to sign up for Medicaid, or doing things like that. With our town, you know, we really don't have other resources, and so I'm kind of the catch-all as far as helping folks with anything as far as government things they might need to sign up for, or other programs or research. Wi-Fi sessions is one thousand five hundred and forty-seven. That's up about a hundred from last year. We do have a twenty-four-seven Wi-Fi hotspot that is separate from our regular Wi-Fi for the director. So it's open for anyone to use at any time, and it's not secured. Obviously, my account is secured to do things with the circulation in the library, so it's nice to have both of those. We frequently get people there after hours who are just parked in front using the Wi-Fi. For our ages one to seventeen program attendance, we have five hundred and twenty-nine children who attended. That's up from four hundred and eighty-two last year. Our adult program attendance, and that includes the coffee and chat program, the way that the state library categorizes that, because I do have programs of people that come in during coffee and chat. I'm also assisting people with resources at that time. That's considered a program. So we had two thousand six hundred and thirty of those, and that's up from eighteen hundred the year before. Getting down to the numbers, again, you can see that you guys are the largest contributor to us at the library with twenty thousand eight hundred and twenty-five dollars in contributions. Last year, the city contributed thirteen thousand six hundred and seventy-one. The state contribution is one thousand six hundred and twenty-eight, and that's kind of our reward for doing this lengthy annual survey that we do. Donations to the library, this was prior to our Friends Group being established, was three thousand seven hundred and ninety-three. Also, just finishing up at the end of this fiscal year, we did form a Friends of Fenton Library, five oh one C three. And we do have tax exempt status, and so we want to thank Leslie Lampy, because she was our lawyer who worked with us on that right here in Albona. And so that is now fully established. So those are kind of the numbers as far as what's going on. Just to give you a moment to look at some of those pictures there, that kind of tells you a little bit more of the story as well. So if you take a look there under ours, just to note, the Fenton Library is considered a Class A library. That's the smallest size you can have in the state of Iowa. However, there are three tiers that you are rated on based on the services that you offer, making sure you're open a certain number of hours and so on. And we are tier three, which is the highest tier you can possibly get in the state of Iowa. So we're at the same tier as, say, the Des Moines libraries, the Dubuque library, and so on, obviously on a smaller scale, but we offer the same services. Taking a look at the picture down there, that's just some of my folks there for coffee and chat. And we usually have between, anywhere between fifteen and twenty-five people every morning that we're open for coffee and chat. And it's a great opportunity for the seniors, because there's not a lot of other places for them to go in town, so they can come on in here. North Star doesn't open until lunchtime, so it's, it's great for having a chance to just chat with folks. And they've become quite proficient at bringing in great baked goods, so it's been really nice. Middle picture is up there. You can see the two kids there with the items. We have a homeschool STEM program that we do every month, and I also offer preschool STEM and school-age STEM for public school students. This was from last summer, and we were doing a project using gears, and it was around the same time as the Cassuth County Fair. So their task was to try to design simple machines that would be carnival rides. So if you see the little girl looking very intently there at the table, she has made a carousel that actually revolves and goes around, and she has her little paper horses on there and everything. And then the young man in the picture on the right made one of the flying chair rides. So if you take a look at it, you can see it rotates, and there's the little paper guys on there, including the one that's kind of green, because that one's getting sick as he's going around and around on the ride. So that's been really well attended. We have been able to do a lot of different STEM activities. We applied for a grant last year from the state of Iowa and got an amazing STEM card. And I guess I should backtrack a little bit. STEM stands for science, technology, engineering, and mathematics. So we're trying to provide opportunities for kids there. In this case, these are kids who come in and are looking for homeschool enrichment. Going on to the picture at the bottom of the right page there, that is one of our Bunko for Books activities that we do in the evenings. We try to do that about once a month, and it's usually very well attended by all ages, as you can see. And it's a little fundraiser that we do for the library. And it's also just kind of a fun community thing. If you've ever played Bunko, it's, it's a great chance to move around and get to see everybody and get to meet some new people in town. Scooting over to the last page there, those last couple of pictures. The one at the top is one of our programs that we did. That was actually our lunch and learn about our five oh one C three. So that was very well attended. We had over fifty people that came. We have a fantastic community that really, really, really supports our Fenton Library. And then down at the bottom are just some of my kiddos that are spending some time just relaxing and reading some books. So just kind of giving you a little overview, and the newsletter that I gave you is something that comes out every month and has the calendar of events, and then just some different articles. This month is talking about some of our upcoming events that we do every year. We do an honor ornament fundraiser, and then the names of all the people who are honored get read off at the Christmas party in Fenton. So it's kind of a tradition that's gone on for quite a while. We are doing something new this year with the gingerbread house decorations. We have about thirty-five kids signed up to come and create gingerbread houses, and then the moms and dads can also learn how to do different decorative things for Christmas packages. So it's also going to be a cocoa bar, so that'll be a lot of fun. And then we just had a really great presentation. If you're familiar with Trudy, who's Camp Peterson. She is the former executive director of the National Archives. And she grew up in Fenton, is a Fenton graduate, and she comes back and stays on the farm every summer. And she just did a great presentation for Veterans Day on her work with the U.S. Russia Committee on POWs and Missing in Action. So she was talking to us about how they were working in the early eighties and working on recovering the names and remains of some of our soldiers. So just a few of the things that are coming up. If you get a chance to look at services later, I won't go through all of those. But you can see that, that we do try to pack as much punch as we can into the library. So that's basically all I wanted this year today, just to let you know that our library is thriving. We've got a really, like I said, active community and supportive community, so we're very appreciative of your contribution. You can see it's the largest part of our whole budget. So any questions for any of you?
That was a pretty detailed report.
Okay. I only do that to you once a year. All right, well, thank you very much for your time.
Thanks, Laura.
Sure.
Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome.
Oh, thank you, okay.
All right. Yeah, morning, Ken.
Good morning, Ken.
We'll go to the conditional purchase agreement next on our agenda.
Okay, a couple of weeks ago, I was in here and requested the board do a conditional purchase agreement, just to refresh everybody. What we're trying to do is apply for a grant through the Habitat Grant through the DNR to... to acquire 128.32 acres south of Albona. The agreement was conditional upon the Habitat Grant being successful. And then the remainder of the dollars would come from the Cassuth County Conservation Board Conservation Reserve Fund. So there's no tax dollars that have been requested on that. Our county attorney, Todd Holmes, did prepare the purchase agreement and the seller has approved that. So that's kind of where we are now. Last two weeks ago, we had several questions that were brought up from the board and asked me if I could, you know, find some more information. I did make some calls to the DNR representatives. I also talked to many individuals and also talked to all of our Conservation Board members. A few things to share with you regarding the restrictions through the Habitat Grant. And this is part of the, there's many pages that describe what you can or cannot do. But restrictions on the grant requires that the land principally be used for wildlife habitat and public hunting be allowed. Other compatible uses such as fishing, trapping, hiking, nature stunning, cross-country skiing except will be permitted. There was also another question that was brought up on revenue and it said grant recipients cannot provide public use facilities such as camping, picnicking, snowmobiling on areas that are required with the Habitat Stand Fund. So basically that's some of their restrictions. You also cannot charge recreational fees, so you cannot implement a user fee. What I would like to point out on, although we cannot charge a user fee for these wildlife areas, they do generate revenue within the county. If you've been out and about at all in the last two or three weeks, there's a lot of pheasant hunters from many different states and counties that come to Cassuth County to enjoy our areas. While they're here, certainly they spend money, gas, lodging, restaurants, whatever. So there is revenue that is brought forward from purchasing these lands. Another question that was brought up was a buffer zone. Pass one of these down the line, please.
Yes.
I'll take the bob ears, Jack. Here's a question was brought up about establishing a 200-yard buffer zone east of the property that the county was looking at purchasing for the nearby landowner who had concerns about the safety issues with the public hunting. My contact with the DNR was a gal by the name of Kelsey Fleming. And I asked her if they had ever had to do that in the past or had requests about in the past. She contacted all the review committees for the grant and she said, no one on the committee had ever heard of such a request. Part of the reason is there is a 200-yard limit law that is in effect. And if you look at page one, I've got it highlighted on the top right. Basically, it says you cannot discharge a firearm or shoot or attempt to shoot a game for a baying animal within 200 yards of a building unless the owner or tenant has given you consent to do so. I didn't pass out this, but this was taken directly from page 16 of the 2024-2025 Hunting Regulations. She said one of the problems you would have if you established an additional buffer zone is there's nothing in the Iowa codes, you'd have no way of enforcing it. So basically you'd be putting up a set of signs that you had no enforcement to do so. She also mentioned that if you put that in the grant, that you wanted to do that, it is going to lower your score because you're adding additional restrictions on the property. If you would look at page two of the handout I just gave you, please. The area in question, there's, it shows where the land that juts the Krail property. And there we're talking about, there was Doug Crouch, there's Sean Chase and Friedens property. On the third page, I made the distance for what the setback would be for the, I guess it's Gish. The closest house there, what that purple line represents is the most direct route from the residence to the east side of the river, which would be the beginning of the Krail property. The closest house is 725 feet. The Chase house is 928 feet and the Crouch house is 1,420 feet. So even with the 200-yard setback, none of these houses would be falling without law where they would need to have any extra restrictive boundaries for the hunting. Our Conservation Board goal is to provide habitat and public recreation for the public. We do not feel that one landowner has the right to restrict or dictate the activities of another person on the land that they do not have control of as long as it's illegal activity. The board requests that you approve this conditional purchase agreement. We also request that if we, acquisition is approved, it receives tax abatement just like all of our other Conservation Board properties.
All right, anything else you have for us, Kendall?
No, I think I answered the questions that were brought forward two weeks ago.
Does anyone from the board have any further questions or comments?
When you were talking about a score, what does that refer to? Or what was?
For the grant.
For the grant or as far as the buffer affecting a score?
When you submit a Habitat grant, it's a competitive grant and they score you on a variety of different things.
Oh, determine who gets it.
To determine who gets the funds.
Sure, okay, that makes sense.
Yep. And I had comments for and against. People are concerned about county having less revenue because property taxes are going to be taken off and there is concern about that. And then there's people that want to hunt, so we have to balance what people really want, I guess. Can you give me an idea of how many people you think would use the property for hunting? It's hard to tell because on that particular piece, you wouldn't be able to see them from the highway. I can tell you this time of the year with the pheasant season actively open, many of our current county pheasant hunter, county public wildlife areas, they get hit three and four times a week. Pretty much from the start of pheasant season till deer season starts in December. There's a lot of public use on those properties. I guess the concern from the public was that you're doing this for a handful of people when it maybe, maybe they don't understand that more people than that are using it, but that's their perception. Yep, well, I mean, as I, as I mentioned, there is other uses. It's, it has to be open to public hunting, but I'll give you an example. Smith Wildlife Area, south of town, that was bought with Habitat dollars as a public hunting area. That was the reason that the county got the money to buy that piece. There's people out there year-round hiking, whether they're wildflower, looking at wildflowers with their mushroom hunting, they're taking their kids down. And obviously, we got the added attraction for about a month with the Sugar Shack operation. But the public areas get used by a lot of different people, not just hunters. The other concern that a couple of people had was it's a grass strip to get to it. Is there any possibility that that will get improved so that it'll be easier access? Our board talked about that and that would be something we would like to improve, but that would be on our, our expense to do that to improve the access. It would make it more accessible to the public. Correct. So that was another concern that people approached me with is that you're buying a property with limited access.
Which to that point, would that be allowable under the current agreement that's on that property for grass and the grant? Like, is there any condition that limits the access?
The restriction was there had to be public access to the property. The public access is from Highway 169 on that grass strip. So if you, the property would be owned, that access right now is owned by Mr. Krail. So when he transfers, it would be owned by the Conservation Board and we can improve it however we wish.
Okay, I didn't know if there was any limits to the program that's in now as we're putting in a ground road.
The access is not part of the WRP, so you could improve that.
Okay, the access is not part of that program, okay.
Yeah, I also had a call from Town Busher, is that the one, is that the one you know? Goes out here in West Town.
What's that?
Town Busher, is that the one that goes out here in West Town on the bridge?
Craig Busher.
Craig, is it Craig? And he called, he also had concerns about the loss of tax revenue on the land and that we're getting too much land out of, off the tax rules in Cassuth County. And he just says, we've got enough land not being taxed that we need to cut. Maybe start thinking about not taking any more land off the tax rules.
Jack, do you know what the amount of tax on that property is?
It's like $1,700.
Yeah, sixteen, sixty-eight.
I saw sixteen, so in not a significant chunk of cash.
No, well, if you take, say, 20,000 acres or wherever there is in Cassuth County that's, or more that's not being taxed anymore significantly. It's not, that's just one little piece of land, but there's a lot of land in Cassuth. One time I do, it was like 16, maybe two and 16, 20,000 acres of Cassuth County land that's not being taxed anymore.
I guess that would be an issue with the road leading up to the day, but that's not really, I mean, I get it. I didn't really have anybody reach out to me for economic concerns. It was more, I did, I did have the opportunity, I spoke with each of the residents along there. Crouches and Pixes and Chases and Gish. And I think the primary concern is that unlike Smith Woods where hunters are going in and going away from Dr. Moss's house and the other residents out there here, they would be coming in towards residences and shooting towards, in that direction. And if the use, if there would be any use of high-powered weaponry in doing that, I think was the primary concern was more just a safety issue of being along the banks because that's used frequently. Granted, and I did talk about this with residents there, majority of the time that you'd be utilizing those banks for fishing, for recreation, whatever, you're not going to, it's not during hunting season. So there is that, but I'd say that was, that was probably the, the main concern that was brought up to me through this and the reason for the desire for some sort of buffer. But I think it really comes down to if you're going to do a buffer, it has to be a precedent going forward, then that the county is going to allow for that in future property. Otherwise, you can't just pick and choose, we're going to do a buffer here and then not do it over here. The rest of the land can be grandfathered in at this point if you're going to go about it that way. But it would affect moving forward in the future. But just my two thoughts, I guess.
Amber or Howard is elected supervisor. Do you guys have any questions or anything on this or comments?
No, the only thing, listening, what is the setback like for residents?
200 yards.
200 yards.
200 yards, yeah, I missed that, okay.
Which, there's a distance down to the river to begin with, so that's from the resident.
So safety wouldn't be a concern?
This is on the other side of the river from the residence.
So there's only certain hunting times that are going to be available when there's other recreation?
The regular hunting seasons.
I mean, could other recreation be going on at the same time as hunting to make it dangerous for people?
Yeah, the people, the people who own the land on the other side could be down, their concerns, they could be down there fishing and they're, and they're using that river a lot. And their concerns that there's people on the other side using their public access and their, and their safety could be a danger because they're on the other side of the river. And they use the river substantially.
Come up to the podium if you would like to talk.
I just want to make a comment that there's that 200 buffer. I could put my duck boat in at the archery course, float down that river, set up on a bank and shoot ducks until I wanted to go home or have my limit. So the 200 yard is from the house. That river, if you put that buffer strip in there, I can still float down that river, set up a duck, shoot, shoot and go home and still be all legal. This whole buffer strip, all their houses are up on a hill. Last time I checked, deer don't fly and that's when the rifle season is.
You don't believe in Santa Claus, Willie?
Nope.
I guess my question wasn't because of the houses as much because there's that setback, but just if there was other recreation stuff going on at the same time as hunting or if it would be closed off at a certain time for hunting so that people are aware that that's going on and they use their judgment not going in or, I don't know.
To answer that, Anne, Anne?
Yeah.
Let's see, yeah. To answer that, on our areas that are public hunting, they're posted very visibly right as you go in.
Yeah, and I, yeah, and I don't hunt, so I don't go into those areas, but.
There's a lot of activities that cross over, but if you're going to go recreate on an area the first weekend in December when slug season is on, you better be wearing orange.
Yeah.
You know?
Yeah, that's all I was curious for.
A lot of the year, when hunting seasons are closed, people use it for other activities.
Yeah, yeah, that's all I was curious.
But it is posted, so people would be over.
Yeah.
Just like any other property. And, and that's a risk that as a resident, you're going to run into, really no matter where you live in the rural area, your neighbor could be out hunting as well. I mean, it is a risk, but this is, I think the difference is it's public versus private hunting ground. Because I and Dick, I'll have hunters back in there before.
Doug, if you want to come up?
Dick has been a good neighbor this whole time, right? He knows there's houses on that side. Kendall said, and I don't disagree, there is public use of that. There are several county-owned properties that are used by out-of-state hunters, non-local hunters. And they're not going to know necessarily that we're using that space down there. Again, this all come back to safety. I go down there, I run into the neighbors. So I'm not the only one here that uses that property a lot. I went down there and there's Dick on the inside of the river fishing. So I know it gets used, but when you go from one family using it to opening it up to the world, which is what's happening here, because it's out-of-state hunters, I would like to see that buffer. If not a buffer, maybe all bow hunting, because I don't have as much of a concern about the shot projectiles, flare coming.
And I'm not sure Kendall, if it were to theoretically be all bow hunting, that wouldn't qualify for the grant then?
No, that would greatly restrict your score.
Correct.
And I guess our goal as a Conservation Board is to make recreation activities for all. And selfishly, I'm not a bow hunter, so it would not benefit me one bit. But you have opportunity, it isn't just deer hunting down there. There's pheasant hunting, there's squirrel hunting, there's turkey hunting. There's some wetlands, obviously, if you're a waterfall hunter, you got the river. There's a variety of hunting opportunities. If you limit it just to bow, you're really narrowing your scope.
Right. I'm just asking that question there.
Any other questions or comments from the board?
As I was going to say, I have, I just have a comment.
Good, please come up and introduce yourself.
I'm Terry Miller, I'm the Chair of the Conservation Board and I was born and raised hunting. And I would think that, and it's common sense. I mean, we're the person who is, who is hunting and also the person. And I would think that, and it's common sense, I mean, we're the person who is, who is hunting and also the person who lives near a hunting area. If you know hunting is going on, you also have to take your own responsibility for safety. Wear that orange, if you're concerned, wear that orange. That's all I wanted to say, is that it, it goes both ways.
Kendall, I guess the question I have is, you know, in the future upkeep, it's gonna be, there will be tax dollars used to the upkeep. That doesn't come out of the money that buys the land, you're gonna have to use your funds as a part of your budget in the future for upkeep, any repairs to that property.
Yes, that's correct, just like all our other properties, that's why we have a budget to manage, whether it's the campground or wildlife area or ferry or whatever.
So it's fair to say that there are gonna be tax dollars used?
Yes, because our salaries, our salaries are paid by tax dollars, and our staff is the one who takes care of it, so it has to be tax dollars used.
Right.
Ron?
Ron Reefer. Yeah, so what they're asking for is with this two hundred yard buffer, if they're feeling that, uh, their safety is being encroached, so the two property owners, so that also falls for someone that's gonna be fishing, so are we gonna go two hundred yards into their property with a buffer also for our safety? If I'm down there fishing while they're hunting? If they're gonna ask it from this side, can we ask it from that side? Is that fair too? Kinda unreasonable, isn't it? Just a point.
Um, Kendall, back to Jack's question, maybe a little bit about maintenance and tax dollars for that. I think I had asked last time if you had any estimate on what kind of ongoing cost that would entail, and when Steve Young had called me, I asked him the same thing, and he said there really wasn't much of a discussion on that, so. Do you have any certain, like, we, we're gonna do X activity every five years or X activity every three years or?
There, it was seeded down to native grasses by the N R C S that has been mowed last year and it was mowed again this year.
Okay.
So depending on how the grass.
The entire property?
No, just where the, the native seedings were, it wasn't the entire property, the part of it has other land features.
Okay, how many acres?
I believe about eighty-five was seeded to native grasses.
Okay.
Usually you mow the first two years and you try to burn year five or six, so, you know, in a couple of years, the, the burning plan would probably try to get that burned, just as we do many of our other areas. It's not, a wildlife area is not like a campground where you have to visit it daily, mow it daily, do rounds daily, but there is ongoing maintenance. Obviously, it is a responsibility on our properties, we have to do, we control, just like everybody else, so there could be some spraying and mowing, et cetera, for that.
I just didn't know if you had any loose dollar figure, but, okay.
You do realize that the number one goal of the state legislature this year is to reduce property taxes. Reducing property taxes means there's gonna be less dollars available in this county for everything, including conservation. So how frugal can you be in maintenance? Because you're likely to get less tax dollars, I'm not gonna be here, Jack's not gonna be here, but they're gonna have to cut the budget by, what do you think, Kyle? Can fifteen percent in every department make it work?
I don't know.
And your department's gonna be the same thing, can you do it with less dollars?
I, I feel we can, unless you get to the point where, where things are so dire, you have to cut staff. We have the, we have the equipment to manage that piece of property, we have the staff that knows how to manage that piece of property.
So that's going to be something the board's gonna have to discuss in the new budget?
It is.
Could I make one more?
Yeah.
Um, once again, Kurt Nielsen, um, we're all talking about revenue and we're trying to find ways to quantify that, but if you go opening season of pheasant, you go to any hotel, you go to any convenience store, you go to any restaurant, there's somebody in there from Virginia, New Jersey, Minnesota, Wisconsin, you name it, and they're only here for one reason. And that's direct, direct revenue into this county that you would never see. I'm taking a guy out this afternoon from northern Minnesota, he's commented yesterday, man, you guys like really have a lot of opportunities for people to go and hunt. And I said, yes, we do, and I gotta be late this morning because I'm trying to promote to have more of those opportunities. So it's a number that I don't know how you get to how much money there is for revenue every year, but it's gotta be a pretty large number. Restaurants, hotels, gas stations, they even just go shopping. I mean, some of them bring their wives, their children, there's opportunities that, that we don't even know yet, and, and that's our job as pheasants, for it to promote it. Talking about out-of-state people coming in there, everybody in the United States has to go through a hunter safety program. That outlines where's your safer areas to shoot, where you should, where you shouldn't, what you should wear. That's nationwide that they have to do that, so you get bad people in everything, I get that, and I, and I know that, but it isn't that they weren't trained to do things the right way, they just chose to do the wrong way. So it, I don't know how you solve that, you don't, but it's not that they weren't educated.
You're, you're talking to the wrong people right now, you gotta talk to some state legislators that wanna cut our funding, we're, we're not bad people. We're, we're gonna try and make, or they're gonna try and make a balanced budget, it's not.
We're talking about trying to promote revenue for the county, so that will offset some of those non-tax things, so. We just hosted a governor's hunt last year, we had over three hundred people, the majority of them weren't from the county. Everybody made money on that. The Fair Board, the Ag Museum, the Shooting Sports People, the Archery Club kids, there's, um, everybody made money and, and we were happy. That's what it's all about, is to have everybody take a piece of our pie that we are trying to promote. So, yes, you're gonna use, lose tax dollars, but yes, you're gonna be gaining revenue.
Well, and.
I put the bets on gaining revenue, because I've seen it, I've seen the people, I'm out there doing it, and you see people from everywhere here for no other reason than their opportunities.
Thank you.
We had one more, uh, Mr. Buscher, I wanted to ask one more question. The land was put in, see, they had a one-time payment for, uh, putting it into, into conservation?
They didn't, they didn't get a payment for the seeding, the seeding was part of the agreement when he signed up for the Wetland Reserve Program.
But did, but they gotta, did the land owner get a one-time government payment for putting it in?
Yes, he did.
Is there any regulation so that he can take that money as a one-time payment and then turn right around and sell it a year later with no consequences?
I think there's a, uh, so many-year wait, but that's passed.
So it's been a number of years since it was put in?
Okay, um, and I guess on the tax dollar side of things, I was just touched recently. I don't think we are required to abate the taxes, so that is something that, um, we could have as a discussion point if it is purchased, the, if it is purchased and the taxes are not abated, are you going to be able to handle that in your budget?
We do not feel that a county should be taxing a county entity, so the answer to that is no. Because I, I feel that's, our board feels strongly that if we go that direction, um, you're gonna want to have us taxed on all the properties that we own. Or that we manage, the county owns, but the Conservation Board manages. All the properties we own are Casoot County Conservation Board in the name of Casoot County, so you're.
Well, we do have a public hearing scheduled for nine, is there any, um, motion on the topic at hand?
Well, I think it's been good that we took time to look into it and not rush into things, and either way, but, uh, I appreciate you all sharing your thoughts on that.
Yep.
All motion to approve the conditional purchase agreement of the land in Section two and three of Riverdale Township and Section thirty-four of Cresco Township.
All right.
And part of that was that it'd be taxed on to?
I was just reading the agenda description, but, uh.
The request was the tax abatement also.
The request of the Conservation Board.
Uh, are you including that in your motion to abate the taxes?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a second to that motion? All right, we have a motion and a second on the floor, Tammy, can you kind of repeat that motion so everyone is clear?
Uh, motion by Nass, second by Whacker, to approve the conditional purchase agreement of land in Section two and three of Riverdale Township and Section thirty-four of Cresco Township and to abate the taxes on the property.
All right. Any discussion amongst the board here now on the motion? Anything, um? Kendall, one question quick, um, have we purchased other properties with the same grass program that you're talking about that this property has?
Yep, there's one north of Saint Joe called McGuire Wildlife Area.
Okay.
There's one north of Saint Benedict, Saint Benedict that we repurchased from Mark Klein and Doug Marlowe. There's one south of our Saint Benedict Wildlife Area.
Okay.
Both of, all three of those prior ones were in the Wetland Reserve Programs, we've done that at least three times.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? Is there any discussion on the tax abatement piece of the motion?
I guess I kinda agree with Conservation Board that it shouldn't be taxed, if it's gonna be for public use, it shouldn't be taxed, so I kinda agree with that.
Doesn't seem to make sense for one county if you tax another county.
To pay taxes to ourselves seems a little bit ridiculous.
It's just a matter of who pays the bill, but, yep. All right, roll call vote, please, if there's no more discussion.
Class?
Yes.
Jerks?
I'll vote yes.
Whacker?
Yes.
Nass?
Yes.
Stacker?
Yes.
Class?
Yes.
All right, motion carries unanimous. Thank you all for the discussion.
Yep, thank you.
Okay. Are we all ready for the public hearing or do we have quite a five-minute break? You guys? Well, no, we're not ahead of schedule. Yeah.
We're three minutes behind.
Yeah, we're behind, but. Okay. Well, um, we are gonna keep going with our agenda, so if anyone has any discussion, please take that out to the hallway. If not, we will continue with our agenda here. Next up is a public hearing for the amended Buffalo Township urban renewal. Do we need a motion to open the public hearing? Okay?
I'm moved to open the public hearing.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to open the public hearing, any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Class?
Yes.
Jerks?
Yes.
Whacker?
Yes.
Nass?
Yes.
Stacker?
Yes, all right, public hearing is open. Do we have Doug or Amy, who wants to kick this off, or do we have Amy?
I don't think so.
Or is she planning on attending at all?
I don't know.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know, she didn't indicate that she was, so.
Okay. Do you want me to read this?
It's your hearing.
Okay, um, does any members of public have any questions or comments at this point to start off?
Well, only when you get started, maybe.
Okay, um, so, has everyone seen the formal notice, or does anyone want a copy of this? You would like a copy, okay, can we get some copies?
Just of this?
Uh, yeah, probably.
This is the hearing, that's the amendment.
Okay, um. I don't know.
Why don't I just take the amendment?
Okay, that'll work. So this, this notes a public hearing on designation of, of expanded Casoot County Buffalo Township Economic Development District and on proposed urban renewal plan amendments. So the notice is given at nine o'clock today at this boardroom here in Elgona, Iowa on November twelfth, twenty twenty-four. There will be a public hearing on the question of designating an expanded Casoot County Buffalo Township Economic Development District or the urban renewal area pursuant to Iowa Code, Chapter four oh three, by addition of the property situated in Casoot County, Iowa, um, which is listed below. All of the established public right-of-way roads and bridges and highways in Casoot County and the property comprising the Casoot County Fairgrounds situated in the corporate lo, city limits of Elgona. Certain wind turbines situated in Casoot County bearing property tax partial identification numbers as followed, those are all listed here. And then the subject matter of the public hearing will also include a proposed amendment to the urban renewal plan for the urban renewal area covering the territory identified above pursuant to Chapter four oh three, a copy of which amendment is on file for public inspection in the auditor's office. The general scope of the proposed urban renewal plan, as more specifically described therein, includes the following. The proposed amendment to the urban renewal plan brings the property described above under the plan and makes it subject to the provisions of the plan. The amendment all, so authorizes the undertaking of new urban renewal projects in the urban renewal area consisting of tax increment financing to pay the costs of renovating and remodeling the existing grandstand at Casoot County Fairgrounds and using tax increment financing to pay the costs of constructing county road and bridge improvements in order to enhance transportation infrastructure and encourage the promotion of economic development. And then at the hearing, any interested person may file written objections or comments and may be heard orally with respect to the subject matter of the hearing. So, as we've talked about in our board meeting several times here recently, this urban renewal, um, proposal incorporates the wind turbines that were recently constructed and, um, would allow them, would allow tax increment financing to be used for those evaluations. Is there anything else the board thinks we should highlight? And we're getting some copies of the amendment passed out there, so. Is there any comments?
A question.
If you'd like to come up and ask your question.
So, the Fair Board came to you guys with, when we had ARPA money and requested some of that ARPA funds for the grandstand? How come you told them no then, when we wanted to have taken out a loan for that money? And you were on that ARPA committee that said no?
I don't remember the specific conversation.
So why was it no then, and now we wanna take out a loan for it, where we had money to pay for it before?
There were other projects that were chosen at the time, I wasn't the only one on there, we voted on them as a board, I mean, I, I don't remember that specific discussion in that ARPA committee.
I think we discussed that it wasn't the property that belonged to the county at that time.
So, so we wanna take out a loan now to pay for property that still isn't the county's?
I have a problem with that, though, presently.
So, I don't know if there was a whole lot of research done into the actual ownership. So, I don't know if there was a whole lot of research done into the actual ownership there, um, but it is the Cassoot County Fairgrounds and I have looked at the code section. I don't know if I have that.
Well, then if what Roger says is true, then when you guys voted it down with the ARPA funds, you were incorrect. You didn't look at your everything before you voted it down.
Um.
We voted on it, the discussion.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think.
And you chose not to, you chose not to give them. So, somebody said no?
Yeah, so the research very likely was not thoroughly done at that point in time. But Iowa Code one seventy-four does refer to the fairgrounds and.
I, I don't care whose property it is. I want to know why you're willing to do a loan to give a money now when we had the money before you voted. You said no.
I wasn't the only one that said no, that's.
I, so then why aren't you saying no right now to a loan?
Um.
I, I want to know what the difference is. Why all of a sudden you changed your mind?
At the time, there was probably a lot less known factors around that grandstand project. I don't think it, we had a very clear. I don't know if we specifically had a cost estimate even at that time. I think it's been revised.
They were raising money at that time for it, so they had an amount.
Yeah, a requested amount is a little ways from concrete.
No, they had an amount of what they wanted and then what they, what they needed to fix it and what they were asking from ARPA funds.
Well, I don't, I don't think the project was mature enough at that point in time to put money towards it, um. And this does not guarantee.
What's changed to make it more mature now?
Time.
What's happened in that time?
More plan updates. They've gotten cost estimates from the engineering firm that's been doing that. It's, it's evolved a lot.
And, and they didn't have that before when they had their total amount we're fundraising for it?
I, I don't remember if they had hard numbers at that point in time.
How many years ago was this?
Two?
Twenty-one.
Two or three, yeah. So, it, I mean.
Well, we've, um, bored two years and it was before our time.
It's, so it's probably three plus.
It's twenty-one. It's, it was in twenty-one.
No, it was, it was, I was thinking it was twenty-one, yeah. So, I mean, probably talking all of three years ago. And I guess at this point, we've seen how much money has been raised so far towards it and I think the, um, capital campaign is, is very active right now. They are actively talking to businesses and working on getting donations. And putting it in this plan does not give them a million dollars. It's a upper limit for the board, so.
I know, but see, I, nobody trusts the board. So, you may say, we don't give them that amount, but you will give them that amount. That's what people don't believe.
The, the reality is we can't pay for everything that's in this plan with the funding that's pro- that's projected. So, there are projects in this plan that will not get fully funded just because they're on a paper list. Even the road and bridge projects, the list that we have outlined will, they will not all be built. Some will buil- be built with other uses of funds, whether it's local or federal or other.
But how do you justify taking out a loan to give somebody money? I, I'm all for giving them money if we have it sitting there, but why, why do a loan to give somebody money? That, that's not in good business.
This is a designated revenue fund that is outside.
And what happens if we don't get taxes from the land mill or the windmills? Who pays for that then? Who pays for what we've given them?
So, that's part of, that's part of what I would consider management of how those dollars are borrowed and distributed. Because if we are borrowing and distributing those dollars in a conservative manner, we will be able to have revenue coming in that will cover it very, very quickly.
But if the state changes it next year, who's paying for what you've given them? Who, who's gonna pay it if we all of a sudden don't get taxes from the windmills?
So, on the wind turbines in particular, there was one of our neighboring counties that had issues with their TIF because the developer upgraded, they put new blades, they redid the turbines. They said that they should go back to zero percent valuation, start over and start that schedule all over again. Um, which of course means they are paying less taxes.
So, so then, who pays that? That's what I want to know. I want to know who's gonna pay it?
The state of Iowa. The state of. The state of Iowa clarified that and now that should not be an issue going forward. So, we've kind of worked out those bugs.
Really not answering her question.
No, no. I want to know who's paying for it if we don't get those tax dollars?
You're saying if.
Are you're gonna raise all of our taxes to pay that because you chose to do this loan?
You're referring to the debt.
Exactly. If we're not gonna get it from the windmills, it's gotta come from somewhere else and that's what I'm asking you. Who's paying that?
The debt service, the debt service levy would be the worst case scenario fallback, but I think.
It could happen.
It could happen, but with.
You can't guarantee it won't.
With good planning, the chances of that would be slim to none.
But you can't guarantee it's not gonna happen.
We can't guarantee what happens ten minutes from now. That's life.
Exactly. So, why do it?
Because.
What's the benefit?
Because other counties are very successfully using this tool, um, and I guess in, in my conversations with other supervisors, um, how they have used it to benefit their county is a huge positive, um, tool in the toolbox.
So, why do we need it? Why, why did we start in the first place? Because we don't have enough money?
Um. There's probably a lot of factors that go into that. I brought this up as a idea when all the dots kind of connected with the changes in state law that we're dealing with recently with the fact that these projects were built and that valuation is coming online. My conversations with other supervisors, um, there's going to be a lot of conversations about TIF and urban renewal areas around the state over the next, now into the next couple of years. It will be, probably be a lot more common than it used to be. So, the fact that we are using something or could use something that others have successfully used for decades, I don't think is a bad thing. It just probably wasn't looked into very clearly or, um, had a lot of information gathering that has occurred. I mean, and you have to have a project that fits with it too. So like Gold Eagle. We've had a TIF on that for ten years. Has that been a bad thing for the county? Um, we've done multiple road projects with that. We've got more in the works. That's been being effect here for a decade. So, if it's used properly, it could be a very good tool for our county.
And who gets to choose what it's used for?
The board does.
So I'm kind of here twofold, the citizen and us coming into the board. So, some of my questions, um, one being and a comment, Gold Eagle, they pay property taxes. So that is something that's captured through their infrastructure that they added to our county. They also added a tax base. So, you know, that's, that's a little bit different. Um, although I feel the grandstand project is something that our county, it's a, it's a great thing. I mean, we've gone to the races many, many years. I know my dad, um, was on the fair board and I know that was very important to him. But as I sat in that chair for probably how many years? I sat there twelve years. The fair board came in every single year and asked for money. And some of those years, they asked for money for a grandstand project and they asked for, you know, dollars because they were gonna be matching because they needed that for the state. I heard no. I heard no. That wasn't given. So why all of a sudden, when we don't have money to give our employees raises, um, we're taking away their health insurance because of funds and financial, um, obviously financial stress to the county? Now all of a sudden, we're gonna take out a million dollar loan? With no tax base to complement that. I- is there tax base coming in for this loan?
Yeah, the wind, the wind turbine valuation is the tax base that we are adding. So.
You, no, but you're, you're put, you're putting up an infrastructure that isn't adding tax base, correct?
No, the infrastructure is already there, but their valuation is not on because of the staggered effect where it goes.
I'm talking about the grandstand. I'm not talking about the windmills.
Oh, okay.
I'm talking about the grandstands and you have to.
You're saying the grandstands wouldn't have a value on tax base?
No, I'm not saying they don't have a value. They have a value and I'm not saying it's a bad project, but why not give money so much every year that we actually have? I mean, we're entering into after a year of having zero money and, and this budget dragging on until August, but we don't have any money. And, and now of a sudden, we want to enter into something that takes out a million dollar loan. And I'm not sure how TIF is gonna pay for that. I still don't quite understand that because this is a revenue bond. This is a geo bond, correct? Okay, and the debt, it, when is this debt going to be certified? You know, not only for the project, if the grandstand project, but for these roads. When is this debt going to be certified?
So, we, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, for today's purposes, December first is the debt certification deadline, which is why we're having the hearing today, but for this year, we are certifying, exactly from our, six hundred and some thousand dollars in an, uh, an internal loan.
Well, we haven't, we haven't said anything for an internal loan yet. That was a figure, um, that the, the projected revenue just from these wind turbines alone, and that's where TIF is different because it's a specific fund, s- specific path of funds. But.
Right, I understand TIF. I don't have that explanation, yeah.
I know, yeah. The, the expected revenue just in this first year from the first five percent of the wind turbines across the whole county is over six hundred thousand dollars.
But the base this year is frozen. You have to freeze the base this year.
It, well, that's what we are talking about, putting them in for the valuation that is not online yet, but would be coming online. So we have to do that before December first.
But my, my point being that we have six hundred some thousand dollars that would be coming in revenue in the coming year.
Yes, just in this next year.
Right, okay. And so, I mean, I, I thought that was kind of our desires aboard and maybe I'm wrong, but um, that we would not be certifying more than the revenue that's coming in within the year. So, I don't foresee.
But the revenue bond's different.
The revenue bond is different, but that's not what I'm understanding we're doing immediately here. That's. I- is that fair or?
Yeah, at some point, your bond, internal loan cannot handle as many dollars as the TIF district is generating.
Yeah.
So you're gonna have to borrow money. At that point, the board of supervisors is gonna have to okay projects.
Correct.
At that point, are you gonna okay a project that's not gonna bring tax revenue into the county? So at what point do you do that? I would think that it'd be down the road a long ways.
It could be any, any period in there, yeah. That is, that's a.
Wouldn't want to push that as one of the first projects because you're not getting money back to pay as quickly as when your valuation on the turbines increases.
And, and that's one of the things we had talked about when we were looking at the financial impact was, okay, year one, next year, we're gonna have almost seven hundred thousand if I remember right. I don't know if you have that sheet.
Six hundred and sixty.
Six hundred, upper six hundred thousand. Next year, it's gonna double. So, if we do an internal loan for six hundred thousand and build a project and the money comes in, we'll start establishing a track record that those funds are coming in as expected, plus five percent, minus five percent, whatever. We'll have actual results to base future decisions on. And if we keep it small as a small dollar figure relative to what's expected to come in, once these get fully online, we're talking three million dollars a year. So, those are the periods of time where if we want to do multiple projects, we could do a year or two worth of funding at that point if we wanted. But if we keep our dollar figure really low, if the worst case scenario happens and we get substantially less than what we would expect, you could always spread it out over more time. But we would still easily pay it off within the twenty year period. It's just, that's kind of a management component of it. If we, if we said we're expected to bring in sixty million and we borrow fifty-eight million tomorrow, that would be pretty dumb in my opinion. So, if we expect to get six hundred thousand and we, or seven hundred thousand and we borrow six hundred thousand, you have to have enough to be able to collect the funds or you don't get those tax dollars. So, the debt is, to me, is just a piece of the mechanics of the situation. If it's handled properly, which is my intent, to keep the debt versus income low, it, it's a very, it's a tool that has a lot of potential, whether it's.
So you're talking roads and bridge projects?
Whether it's roads and bridges or the fairgrounds or if another project comes up, that's all up to the discretion of the board. Obviously, if it's not on this list, it would require an amendment. We'd have to go through the whole process again. But, w- even with these road projects, we may build some of them, some of them may be, be built with other funds, so we may need to add other different projects in. And that's not a bad thing, but that's entirely up to the board's control. But this is a separate pot of money that we would have flexibility with outside of our general budget, which is limited by House File seven eighteen. So that's where it's completely separate from the conversations we had last year a bunch of times.
So, are the previous, um, in, the previous internal loan fund, that's been paid off now?
Not entirely, but it has.
How much is left? Because that's been going on for how many years?
Ten.
Ten? So it should be paid off then in the tenth year, right? Correct? Because it was a ten year thing.
Ten, yeah.
It got added.
No, we've, we've added more projects.
Yeah.
The original, the original, the, the original loan is paid?
Yep.
So there was an additional loan taken out, internal loan fund? Do you remember when that was done?
Yeah, yep.
No, there hasn't been.
There hasn't been an additional internal loan?
Or was it just additional projects?
There was two. They were both before I was here.
Correct, yeah.
Right, and so I'm just asking, is that one paid back?
No.
Not entirely.
No.
Okay, sometime and this, it's not the subject, but I want to know how much is left on that, but I, I'm just really speaking, I, I, I this board has set a picture of we are not financially sound to the public. Number one thing. Number one thing that is talked about everywhere. This is huge. And, you know, I, I, I don't understand the rush. Um, well, I do kind of, but, um, I think you really need to think hard about this. This is a big deal. And, and it's a big deal and, and you know, when you take out money, an internal loan for a project, that project needs to get paid for. And, um, so I think you need to really think hard about how you go about, um, dishing out the money for this. That you can make Dane good insured, that you can still cover all the bills that the county is responsible for. And, you know, make sure our ditches get mowed and all of those things that never, you know, seemed to be able to get done this year because of the financial problems. I mean, this, the, the public is not happy. So, I, it's all enough.
Any other public comments?
I'm gonna kind of follow up, um, with what Amber said without kind of repeating, um, but I think.
Can you introduce yourself?
Yes, since, uh, some of the board may not know me, um, I'm Tricia Wrightman and I actually work in the treasures office, so, um, I think that's probably fair that maybe the board should know who I am, um. So, I think that it's, um, fair to say that earlier this year, um, the board decided to remove the yearly allocation money, um, from the fair board of thirty thousand dollars, um, also reduced the KCEDC contribution of fifty thousand dollars. Um, and then later cut a hundred percent of what was funded to the Cassoot. Um, and then later cut a hundred percent of what was funded to the Cassup County libraries. Um, now they all got their money back, um, but what did the Cassup County employees get? Well, not their two percent raise. Um, and on top of not their uh, two percent raise, they also, you guys also decided to double our insurance deductibles. Um, which uh, turns out to be three thousand dollars a year. Um, and matter of fact, two of the board members decided to drop the family plan because of that. Um, and you guys had every department head come in and cut their budgets. Um, with that being said, um, Doug had to come in and cut his budgets with like, which led to. Um, you know, the painting of the lines on the roads, the mowing of the ditches, and now we need funding for bridges and roads and so on and so forth. Um. So, now we're sitting here struggling with what are we gonna do with this funding? And I would have to agree that I don't think that it's a good idea, along with a lot of other people. Um, you as a board really struggled with um, the budget this past year. And now you want to do an interfund loan, um, and I don't think that tipping the windmills is the answer here. Um, I think that you should be more focused on what you took away from um, the budgets this year. Um, focus on keeping the county employees, um, maybe some of you aren't aware that there's been quite a turnover in employees in several different departments. Um, and those departments include, include um, secondary road departments, uh, the sheriff's department. Uh, the county attorney's office, the assessor's office. Um, so, that's, that's huge, so maybe instead of focusing on a million dollar grandstand project. You could maybe be fo- focused more on the budget and your employees that you currently have at the county. Um, I think that's really all I have to say, but I just don't think that it's a good idea, so, thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? All right, any comments from the board?
Well, I think it's important to remember too that I, I think the majority of comments that are made are over the grandstands. Um, that was not a project that is going to be an immediate project, but it is part of the list of projects. If the board in the future should decide to allocate funding towards that, um. That is not a guarantee that the board is gonna fund that, and the fair board shouldn't take that as a guarantee that. They're going to be receiving that money from the county, that's a conversation to have in the future, but it's simply there in the list. In the event that the board would want to contribute towards that, I, I think priority first, um. Especially this year is going to be our secondary road project, so that's, and that with the goal of. Providing another source of funding for secondary road projects. So that we can maybe have relief on secondary budget as, um, and so we would be able to. Reinstate some of those things that were cut in the past year too, um, and hopefully be in a better position, but that, I guess that would be my only. Comment there, but I understand the concerns, I do.
So is it your point then that you're gonna balance the secondary road budget by using TIF dollars, or?
I think it's a tool to help with the secondary road budget. I mean, is it not, or we'd be building projects that we would have had to use other sources of funding for?
It's.
But my, my concern is, okay, now you're gonna use TIF dollars to help out secondary road. When there's no longer TIF dollars, what are you gonna do to help with secondary road, and I know that's down the road a ways, but. You have to plan ahead a little bit, it's kind of like shutting the door after the horses out here.
That's why you wouldn't do five projects at a time.
You're gonna have to be really frugal on how you do these projects, you can't just.
Absolutely.
Say, okay, now we have a Band-Aid for secondary road, that's not what the TIF is really meant for.
No, no.
No.
Nope, you're absolutely right.
And, and like I said before, this is, this is adding to. The current TIF and urban renewal plan that we have, which has built multiple projects for our secondary road infrastructure. Um, so, this is along the same lines as that, it's just a much bigger scale.
It, it's also a bookkeeping measure for the auditor.
Which there's reports that are required, which already have to be done for the current project.
Is the board gonna give the auditor resources enough to complete all these? You have to think about that.
Is there anything else for the public hearing? Go on once, go on twice. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll close.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion to close the public hearing, is there any discussion on that motion? Roll call vote please.
Clath?
Yes.
Jerks?
Yes.
Whacker?
Yes.
Nah?
Yes.
Sticker?
Yes. Motion carries, public hearing is closed. All right, um. Next is discussion setting date for public hearing on the proposal to incur non-current debt. Do you have a date for that?
Yeah, so Amy recommended. That you guys set November twenty sixth. Am I right on that, Doug? Add November twenty sixth as that.
Okay.
That'll give time for the notice.
At what time, nine o'clock, like this one?
Yeah, I think, I'll get my calendar.
And what is that for?
This is for the public hearing on the proposal to incur non-current debt.
You got the geo bond?
Yes, nine o'clock.
Okay, yep. Nine o'clock. Right, is there any questions on that or discussion?
Amy, are we allowed to ask questions about that?
Yeah, you guys.
So what, what, when you have that public hearing, what gets decided? That you, you're, you're gonna use this as a tool, or is there a dollar amount being put in there? And if that's the geo bond, that would be for the grandstand, right, that's the only way you're paying for that, so.
No, they all.
So, so what does that mean?
Well, there's a, there's a, there's a, there's been a list generated, like, for road projects.
But not with the geo bond, the, not with the geo bond?
No, I believe that's a um. Kind of a blanket over all of them as well.
Yeah.
The revenue bond would be the primary kind of first plan to pay for stuff, but that would be worst case scenario.
That, that would be an internal loan. The internal loan is how you will pay for the roads and the bridges.
No, we're not, we're not actually doing um, bonding, right?
We are doing bonding, you have to incur debt.
Geo bond.
Yeah.
Weren't we doing internal loan though?
So we're doing an internal bond, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry, I was just visiting there, but. Um, you're, are you talking about setting a date for the public hearing on the proposal?
Correct, yeah.
That would be for an internal loan, is our understanding of my understanding, and it is going to be coming from.
Yeah, that's.
The rural basic fund. So you're gonna have a, a hearing on that, and then after that hearing. You will, if you're going to incur debt, you're going to have to take action.
Yep.
And it's going to be, my understanding is it's a real fund that you're planning to get an internal loan for.
And that would be to certify debt before December first, I mean, our requirements, yep.
So that, so actually what you're putting on the agenda shouldn't have wording for the geo bond or revenue bond? Because that's something different.
It's.
It doesn't have the geo bond.
I thought you guys were saying that, I thought you said bond.
No, non-current.
Non-current debt.
Non-current.
Okay, we read it again.
Setting date for a public hearing on the proposal to incur non-current debt.
Okay.
Yep, yep.
So anything with a revenue bond will be later.
Well, this, this would be.
No, there, that is, that is for, the revenue bond would be what would pay that back, but. We're not, we're not actually going to the bond market, is that what you're asking about, like having an outside financing?
Yeah, what's the, what's the difference, you're gonna take out a, a loan?
Internal loan versus going to a bank, that, that'd be the difference, we're not going to the bond market yet.
And so that. Okay, so can that internal loan be used to pay for? A project, you obviously, if you have debt, you have to identify a specific project for that debt.
We have. Yes, yep, correct, yes.
Is that going to be done at the, at that public hearing?
That's already in here, this public hearing lists all those projects.
But the, the board, excuse me, Amber, the board will have to.
Right, but. Yeah, no, that's okay.
And I've, they were talking at the same hearing, they will approve the ordinance. That amend, amends the plan.
Yep.
At that same date, they still have to take official action to amend the plan.
But you're talking which project actually gets built from those dollars, then?
Well, to, to certify debt, you have to have a specific project that it's going to.
Well, it's, it would have the whole list of projects.
You can't just.
That's, that's a list of projects.
So then you're gonna, you, you can't, because you, that's too, too much, like what, what's the total dollar amount for those projects?
We won't, we won't certify the dollar figure for all, to cover all of them, we have to decide which project we want to build. From those dollars.
Well, the question is, when do we pick the project? That is the answer she's trying to get.
You said you're gonna take it slow.
We're, we're gonna, we're gonna. Amend the ordinance, we're gonna, we're gonna vote to incur debt, but then when do we, when do you decide what project?
Well, it'll have to be, if it's a construction project in the secondary road department, it'll have to be part of the five-year program. Which we'll be working on, uh. In the next budget cycle, so right after the turn of the year, we'll be visiting about that, yes.
Yeah, so I would say we'll decide which project during budget discussions this, this winter here.
But the, the projects that will be eligible will be the ones that are part of this plan.
In, in the list, yep.
And the internal loan will not be large enough to construct all of them as, as the future goes. If the board chooses to. Borrow more money to construct more projects, um, they, they won't do that.
So the internal loan would happen, not at that, at, not at that hearing, it happened at a later date?
No, the internal loan.
Not, not at the hearing, right, immediately after the hearing. Otherwise, there will not be any debt certified in this discussion, in all the work that has been done.
Yeah.
So there's gonna be a debt, say, six hundred thousand, there won't be any project tied to that debt until, to budget.
We'll, we'll have the funds available to incorporate a project at budget time.
But that, that thing will be decided with the. With the coming, um.
The new board members, yeah.
Board, with the, with the new, the new budget.
Well, and I'll go ahead and say that. Six hundred thousand dollars is not going to construct very much.
No, no.
Right.
May I answer your question, Amber?
Yeah, I, yeah, I think so, I.
It has to go to the project, you're correct.
Yeah.
On that list, yep.
Yeah, whereas, I, I'm kind of looking at it as really small print, but is the grandstand listed on this as a project and a dollar amount?
Yeah, sure, yep.
Not a dollar amount.
Not a dollar amount?
Just a project.
So that's how, that's how it's listed as a project, okay. For now.
They'll be up to you guys to, they'll maintain time if you wanna borrow money, they'll be up to the reporter, plus them three, they'll pay you your money.
So, yeah, right, did we, uh, my blanket statement is, uh, uh, as I said, if we were last year, I think this.
That's what I thought it was.
Maybe it's good, we're insured, we do enough.
I, I think when you have all the numbers in front of you, I think it'll make a lot more sense, because we've, we've all had that, and. I mean, it's, it's publicly available, we could get that to you after the meeting, but I, I think the picture will be painted a lot clearer after. Um, all the information is at hand. So. For, for the next, for the item here we're discussing, it's to set the date for public hearing, we've talked about November twenty sixth at nine AM. Here in the boardroom, is there any further discussion on that date and time or emotion?
I would move to set the date and time for November twenty sixth at nine AM.
Nine AM?
AM, sorry.
All right, is there a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
Okay. You got AM in there, Tim? Okay, um, any discussion on that motion? Roll call vote please.
Clath?
Yes.
Jerks?
Yes.
Whacker?
Yes.
Nah?
Yes.
Sticker?
Yes, so we will have that public hearing on November twenty sixth at nine AM.
May I just ask one question?
Yep.
Uh. The board, my understanding was the board was going to have an internal loan of one million dollars from the rural basic fund. Has the board decided differently?
We talked about.
Do you remember that discussion, but I don't know. That we set a million?
Well, we do need to, we need to convey that information so that the proper resolutions will be. The proper language will be in the resolutions, and Amy takes care of that, so.
Yeah.
If things are changing, you need to uh, let Tammy know what's going on.
I think we did talk about up to a million, but the rev, the, I think the six hundred thousand we were thinking was the revenue that would come in in that first year.
Six, six sixty, well, six sixty something, six sixty?
Yeah.
So I think you should actually have a loan that correlates to the number of dollars that you're gonna spend.
Well, and we do have some outstanding debt yet too, so I mean.
That, that's outstanding.
Yeah, but.
I guess my, my, can you, why would you borrow many dollars if you're only gonna have seven hundred thou, seven hundred thousand?
And we could.
Used, why tie up the dollars?
Well, if, if that dollar's changing, we can talk about it during board discussion quick, I mean, we, I don't know, we really don't have a. Item to talk about that, but. We can, we can talk about that, let you know, Doug.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Doug.
All right, do you know if Marge is available for dreaming?
Do we try to?
Thank you.
Yeah, let's take a quick five minute break, and we're, we're already almost to ten. Yeah, um.
Congratulations, Alan.
Thanks, I said thanks first, that was a, that was a.
So you described whether to do whatever. Okay. Oh, I was gonna ask.
I was gonna talk about it on in your discussion, but I kicked.
I just wanted to know.
Okay, I'm gonna.
Yeah, so the tip is, do you guys decide when they.
No, no, they'll, they'll have to, they'll have to talk about the consent agreements and stuff next week, probably. And so I think there'll probably be something. Yeah.
Well, I'm just saying, do you have stuff scheduled on?
No, I don't think so.
This is just a public hearing today, it wasn't.
Right, okay, just a public hearing.
I saw, oh, go on, I did.
But, you know, Tammy probably has to be ready to.
Yep.
So are you still accepting them, or did they have to be in?
Um, they're, they're still accepting them.
Oh, they are, okay. I thought that cut off was today.
If they made a determination after the public hearing, yes, but they're not making a determination today.
Oh, right, right.
Cause I know, I know she probably has anybody else that wants to, yeah. I mean, they're probably busy.
Two last time.
There's a lot more than that now, I just printed it all.
Yeah.
Might have, oh, it's right here, right in front of my teeth. There you go.
Oh, thank you so much.
Yep, and then was, um, I appreciate those numbers, was twenty twenty-four the high water, or the twenty twenty the high water, or this was votes go, or, do you know?
I believe so, I haven't looked at that for other.
Okay. Okay, so it almost reached, it looks like it almost reached twenty twenty numbers, it was just.
Yeah. So it's just how we, well, we had, we've set a record for at the county, at the, yeah, for stuff, that's why they never write it.
Yes, yep.
Um, but yes, it was close.
There's always people there, and I went there too, but, um, and then the other thing was mail, and I had some like email on there, or what, what is mail in, that number?
Yes. Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, so there's mailing, the ones that come in the mail, and then there's email for like Uakata, which is military and overseas license.
Mail, yeah. Oh, okay.
And then healthcare facilities.
Oh, okay, like, healthcare, like, like rest homes and hospitals?
That's what those are.
Yeah, we could, we go there and do those, add the rest, add those, go through, we don't have to.
Oh, okay, cool, alright, we don't get some of that included.
Right, yeah.
We don't have that. Okay, thanks.
Yep.
Well, we'll try and talk about that here today and see, see if we can come up with a little bit of a game plan.
Okay. Okay, sounds good.
Yep.
How's it going? You gonna miss it?
No.
I think you were.
Water. Broke's a little bit scratchy.
I was excited that you guys had the week off, last week, but now the agenda is so full.
The, uh, yeah, that's what happens, you skip a week.
It's not really. Exactly.
Have to catch up.
I know.
Howard, congratulations.
Thank you.
Now are you wondering what you got yourself into?
To you too, I guess, I'm sorry.
Oh, people have said that and I completely forget what they're talking about, I forget my name was on the ballot sometimes. But thank you.
How are you going, Howard?
I'm still awake.
Hey, man, you're still awake?
Yeah.
Does that mean you woke up this morning, or?
Yeah, I woke up.
How did you, Amber?
Congratulations, you had a funny good.
Congratulations to Amber.
Thank you.
Dog just had to take a walk last night, ten after eleven, came back, wasn't home.
Oh, really?
As long as he's ever been, uh, he's been having some digestive tract problems. And, I mean, usually you can count on twenty or thirty minutes that he might be down. But, uh, last night he.
Went for a little run.
What he did, he, I said he hasn't been feeling well, he hasn't, he hasn't shared a problem. He's more than enough. He makes, he makes sure he makes her healthcare minimum.
We have dogs, and. It's not that I don't like dogs.
What?
Kids, they remember.
Oh.
Answer froze, it was the extra caffeine. We will still live without a dog somewhere, I guess this is being recorded by wife, I watch it.
God, God. When our dog, I was out for, taking him for a walk, and he was a rescue dog, so, didn't know. Exactly about the history behind it, but we took him out, and we made sure he was on leash, and sometimes he growled with people, other times he just. But anyway, he was walking, and suddenly he died, and he was shot.
Take that.
Tumor, it was cracking, and.
This, this dog had a tumor, this, smaller than a bile duct, but bigger than a, bigger than a slowfish soft bone, and. It removed, at times getting away, but, um, I don't know when it was, but in the last years.
Moved to, yeah, or some.
My wife is all looking at it, like, she shouldn't, shouldn't do it again, ever, it's just a random four even mine, but.
And then whenever they found some, it's, it's tough.
Yeah. Again, according to my wife, my wife says this is our last, this is only our second dog in our house, the first one was fifteen, this one's two dollars. She says there won't be another one, and I, and I, I hope that's right, or at least still we know what we're doing.
You know, dogs, like, they have all these.
Can you correct that in initial, please? Please.
I'll see.
I, yeah. The rod, the rod was outside dog, my wife just drove it.
In initial.
The way you go, it's like, it's like.
I can hand these out, Tim.
Yeah.
Well, it's looking at it, and.
We gotta do drainage yet before the letting too, but.
They put the twelve on, and then you have the eleven.
Oh, sure.
We got it.
Okay. Insert the, we will do these tomorrow, right?
I'll make sure once they're tomorrow.
Alright.
Do it in alphabetical order. Okay, very good, thank you, thank you. Yeah, they turned theirs on, yes, we brought it.
Yeah, I.
Yeah, they didn't update the date, so everybody.
Oh, that's why.
Just make sure.
It was in on time, that's.
I'll let you know how our conversation about budget workshops and stuff.
Yeah, just so I, if you're gonna do it, so I have it on my calendar, because I did reach out to Isaac and they did say that it is fine for us to participate.
Yep. Okay, oh, yeah, it, I mean.
Well, I wanted to make sure, I'm not gonna do anything we shouldn't.
Even as a member of, even as a member of the public.
Well, that, my role is a little bit different than a member of the public, that's what I, that's what I was making sure of.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, no, it's good to check out.
Okay, sounds good, thank you.
Thank you. Roger, you ready?
Sure.
We got drainage here.
We're drained, dude.
Yep, alright, um, so next item here is the drainage transfers that have been made. Do we have a correlation of how much has been brought in or transferred compared to what we assessed out?
Um, close, I, I kind of did a, so like the drain twenty is right on track with the.
Okay.
And then drain thirty-three, we're still waiting on some outstanding.
Okay.
And the rest are, um, former ones, and some were on waivers, so what was asked for, but I have to check, cause. The transfers were made on Friday, and the treasurer's office has to process those, so they weren't here yesterday, so.
Yeah, I was, I, cause I like, I like being able to see them, I just was kinda processing that as we've been looking at these now and, um, thinking.
Yep. Team.
But, yeah, if we correlate them to what we actually assess, it'd be, it'd be good for us to know that if we assess ten thousand dollars and we get.
Yep, right.
Ninety-five hundred in, we're, we're close, but we're short, or whatever, just, just for us to know exactly how that works out in the end.
Right. Yep. Yeah, and that's what I, I kinda looked at before I came in today.
A good comparison. Okay.
And that's what I.
Does anyone else on the board have any questions or thoughts?
At some time, we should label, instead of new main, old main, do we think we should have some classifications on it?
On, in particular?
For a specific district, or for what?
Yeah, for the districts, we talk about new, new main and old main, and is that classification of it enough for the public, if they're gonna see this? I get it, but I don't know if everybody else does.
How else would you label them?
I don't know, that's what I'm asking.
Just a different number?
Year completion, maybe. So like if they had main, there's a complete or updated, or.
I don't think it was reclassified before, so they weren't specifically named, so with the new, with the new project, then they named them.
It wasn't, yeah. Yeah, I, I don't have a problem with it, I'm just wondering if anybody else with a question, with question, man.
I hadn't thought about that real specifically. I don't, yeah, I just don't know what else you would name them, I mean, the year could potentially give some specifics, um. Like if you had lateral one or main one dash twenty twenty-four, you would, that's your drain and your lateral number, and then a year potentially, I don't know.
Well, where I'm going is we're gonna have new main, and sometimes whatever fifty years old.
Right, we, we can take it off the way.
I would think it, yeah, I would, I would think it, once those assessments are all done, would that classification go away, cause it wouldn't be used anymore?
Are in.
No.
The old, the old one would, but, so the, the current ones that the funds are coming into, we can rename those, just the lateral.
Okay.
That's just how they were put in, that's new.
Oh, yeah, maybe food for thought on, maybe Howard will have a good idea on how to name drains.
No doubt.
We could put, we could have that be his project.
It's just something that down the road, new mains, not gonna be a new main in my eyes.
Right.
No, no.
Yep, alright, any other questions or comments on the transfers? But, alright, if not, thank you guys as well, and we will let the record reflect that they're acknowledged. Um, next is the approved joint drain E K one claim, which is in our folder. Anyone have any questions on that? Anything you wanted to say on it, Marge, otherwise I saw it in there.
Just, yeah, acknowledging.
Okay.
They're the control.
Yep.
So, we just need to.
And it was for replacing six hundred and twenty-five feet of twelve-inch dual wall, in general?
Yep.
Seventy-six hundred, roughly.
Five hundred and seventy-seven.
Yeah, I'd make motion to approve this claim, is there a second?
I'm sorry.
Charles, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay? Motion carried unanimous? Need me assign anywhere in particular, Marge?
Just at the bottom. And it's this car portion, so this is the whole.
No, that's the whole thing. Alright, next is repair requests, we got a party of them today. Thank you.
You can get some to Howard, he's feeling nice.
Roger, you wanna?
Sure.
Start reading.
I got one on PAC thirty-four, it's, uh, number hundred and twenty-five, it's in Fenton Township. It's a washout, broken tile, forty-five feet west of intake, needs repair, it's a, it's a. Signed it. And then we have one here, number one twenty-six, in Drainage District one fourteen, that's in Plum Creek. And broken tile and intake and fence line. And then I have one here on drain number eighty-three, and it's number one thirty, thousand feet of broken tile, needs replaced. Um, it was shallow tile that, probably a foot and a half of cover, it was cement tile that was broken, and we replaced it with twelve-inch. And then through car perforated tile, so that project's already done.
Okay. Carter?
I've got number one twenty-two in District one forty-seven, section thirty-two, Leverne Township, for Richard Creeders. Um, this is a broken tile washout there, and then in the same, um. Same township there, section thirty-four, in Tri, um, ninety-three dash one thirty-one dash ten, this is number one twenty-three, also a large. Washout, broken tile, Cody Dorn barely repairing those. And then, I have number one twenty-eight, in DD one fifty-six, Irvington twenty-eight. Um, on the lateral there, intake and fence line that is broken, washed out, for Alan Divas. And then have, uh, number one thirty-one, in District one thirty, section nine, that, uh, the block field on the tile for Tony Hilbert. And that, that may already be repaired, uh, but Reddick will be doing that.
Okay, I had number one twenty-nine, DD eighty-two, washout on the bank of the open ditch for Bill Rotherman in Eberon thirty-one. Number one twenty-seven is. Number one twenty-seven is in DD eighty, open ditch A, lead yard, section thirteen for Dwayne Davids, where the bank is washing, washed out and sloughing off a couple spots. Then one twenty-four is District one thirty-three, lat fifty-five, Seneca twenty-nine. There is broken tile south of the cemetery for Roger Jensen.
Supervisors take care of the repair requests.
Alright, is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Carried unanimous. I've got a stack there. Alright. If you wanna do board discussion, auditor discussion, how are we gonna wait?
Let's wait, we're waiting for them.
Alright, then I think we will, if everyone's good with it, we will skip.
Yeah, thanks, Marge.
Thanks, Marge.
If you noted in the folder, there is also, we received the payment from a Minnesota landowner. It's in your folder.
Yep, yep, we had talked about that at our last meeting, we got a letter, so I, I called them, um, they were not quite sure on the timeline of when Iowa landowners had received it, so they just asked for a simple letter to be sent, so they had a piece of paper for records, basically, so.
Kinda what we agreed on.
Yeah, it was all in the agreement, so there wa, I didn't, I didn't think we needed any approval to send a letter 'cause it was, it was a dollar figure that we all voted on, but we typed up a quick letter, got that sent off and got checked right away, so they were very good and easy to work with, so.
I got a request later.
Okay.
Give, see you later.
Perfect, thanks. Um, so if everyone's good with it, we will skip to our secondary road letting here, uh, and we are past ten o'clock, so we should be good to get started on that.
Uh, yeah, we have local letting here, uh, this would be for a bridge, would be located on the west line of section eighteen of Wesley Township, it's approximately three and a half, little bit under three and a half miles, uh, north of Sexton. There should be a sheet that would get on the location map. Uh, we have received three bids, uh, one from Godverson Smith Construction, one from Graves Construction, and one from Merriman Bridge, and we do have Matt Graves here, uh, who is, uh, in person. So, uh, we'll go ahead and open these up, uh, in alphabetical order. We did have an addendum that was, uh, put out, and we, and it is said, it does say the addendum must be signed and attached to the proposal, so, yes, we have it here, good. We do have a signed addendum, we have a Iowa DOT bid bond for the correct amount of, uh, three hundred, that's what it's, three hundred, thirty-seven thousand five hundred dollars, excuse me. Um, I'll just read the total amount, Adam will, um, Adam and Doug will take and make sure all the unit prices multiplied by quantity is equal, but, uh, uh, Godverson Smith, out of Iowa Grove, their bid, total bid was six hundred thirty-six thousand five hundred sixty-eight dollars and sixty cents. Six hundred thirty-six thousand five hundred sixty-eight dollars and sixty cents. Next bid is from Graves Construction. They do have the addendum signed, they also have a signed bid bond, and the proposal is signed. Graves is out of Spencer. As we get my footing through that, Matt?
Yeah, well, not, not as personal.
Not personal.
Spencer did.
Yeah, Spencer did, but not personal. Uh, their total bid is six hundred sixty-eight thousand two hundred eighty-three dollars and twenty cents. Six hundred sixty-eight thousand two hundred eighty-three dollars and ten cents.
Ten cents at the end?
Yes.
Okay. I thought you'd said twenty cents first time.
Pardon me?
I thought you'd said twenty cents the first time.
Oh, excuse me, six, it is twenty cents, I'm sorry.
Oh.
Six hundred sixty-eight thousand two hundred eighty-three dollars and twenty cents, I'm sorry.
No worries.
And then Merriman Bridge Construction.
You know, my ears were playing tricks.
I have twenty-two.
There is not a signed addendum, um, therefore we will not read that bid. So, it looks like Godverson Smith, uh, was low at the six hundred thirty-six thousand, and, uh, we will, um, go down and tabulate those and make sure that everything's correct, and if it is, we will bring up a motion to award the secondary road project.
Okay. Can you give us a brief overview, what was the addendum for, like, was there something changed?
We had scheduled the opening to be at nine o'clock this morning, uh, prior to the board scheduling a public hearing at nine o'clock, so the addendum was to push that back to ten o'clock, we did not change the, uh, turn-in date, turn-in time, but it was just to recognize that.
Gotcha.
That was my fault, I scheduled two things on top of each other.
And, uh, the engineers estimate it was five hundred sixty-three thousand seven hundred sixty-four dollars, so it is greater than what we had.
Five six, five sixty-three.
Five hundred sixty-three thousand seven hundred sixty-four dollars.
We'll download them all.
Thank you, Doug.
Alright.
Thank you.
Yep, thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
Thanks, man.
Alright. I think next up, we got our, um, Iowa DOT section one thirty crossing safety agreement by Lakota, is that correct?
Yes, um, this would be the railroad intersection right on the west side of the city limits of Lakota. Uh, that has qualified for safety funds, uh, which would put active, uh, crossing improvements on that, uh, flashing lights and, uh, arms, uh, this is a eighty percent federal, uh, twenty percent match, half of that would be the railroad, ten percent railroad, and ten percent Kasoot County. The estimate of cost on that is?
Just under twenty-five thousand?
Uh, that would be Kasoot County.
Yep.
Uh, estimate.
For our ten percent.
For ten percent, here it is, two hundred, the total cost, two hundred sixty-five thousand three hundred thirteen, so Kasoot County would be responsible for ten percent. Um, I would recommend that the board would approve of this agreement.
Uh, I would make that motion. Is there any discussion on the motion? Otherwise I think this would be a good crossing to make a little favor, so. All those in favor, say aye.
Who seconded it?
Aye.
Jarks did.
Oh, sorry.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carried unanimous.
Just sign that, we'll get the rest of it filled out, Kyle.
The, right here?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, next is the Iowa DOT construction agreement for paving side gravel roads along eighteen from Algonah to Sexton.
Uh, yeah, the Iowa Department of Transportation is planning to, uh, reconstruct Highway eighteen from the city limits, east city limits of Algonah, to a little bit east of Sexton next year. Um, they have asked, and I would like to do this, but while the construction is being completed, they would be paving back an extra fifty feet on gravel road intersections. Um, after visiting a little bit with our road foreman, we would be, uh, resurfacing back, uh, north of Highway eighteen, uh, one hundred forty Avenue, uh, one hundred seventy-five Avenue, uh, going south of eighteen on one eighty Avenue, and then in Sexton, one of the roads that we, uh, we maintain there, and it's called Sexton Road, but again, I, uh, it would be a cost coming back to Kasoot County, and I'd estimate that to be right around twenty-five thousand dollars for that. Twenty-four thousand eight hundred seventy-six dollars and forty-six cents. Uh, again, I would recommend that the board would approve of this agreement with the Department of Transportation.
Okay. Motion by Plath. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion or questions on this?
Will you use cement, how deep?
Uh, it's asphalt, six inches of asphalt.
Just six inches of asphalt, okay.
Okay. Alright, any other questions, discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carried unanimous.
As far as maintenance, is it up to the county to maintain?
Yeah, it will become ours once it's completed, yes.
But they'll install.
They'll install, well, they're doing all the, well, yeah, they'll.
So it should be a little more effective for us.
Yes, put in some sub-bays and, uh, material, uh, we did it when Highway eighteen going, uh, west out of Algonah, it was done there, so. Yeah, we need Tammy to attest to that, please.
Does that help much with the, uh, uh, washboarding?
It's, it does that, we get a little bit to the back, to the rear side of it, um, but it definitely, we don't have to stick our nose out into the highway.
Right, we're doing that mainly, yes.
Yeah.
That's helped quite a bit.
Alright, um, next is the cost allocation plan for five twenty-four. That's in our packet as well, is there anything?
This is our yearly plan that they conducted for us, and they've completed it, and so attaches the certification and then the invoice, uh, four thousand four hundred and fifty dollars.
Is there any questions on that? Or a motion? Motion by Plath, second by Jarks. Is there any further discussion? Uh, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, say nay. Motion carried unanimous. Just straight there. You want me to frame to run that, or you're not? Okay, perfect, thank you. Alright. Next up is discussion decision, the current planning and zoning administrator salary split, was discussed two weeks ago.
We made a motion to put ten thousand dollars towards the zoning administrator's salary.
Yep.
Currently, uh, three people that are doing it, so I would suggest that you split it three ways. If you're gonna use it in.
Until the next person's hired.
Yeah, yeah.
Any other comments? Alright, entertain any motion for this topic?
I would make that motion.
I'll second.
Can you clarify, you're, just split it three ways?
Three ways.
Okay.
Do you want, do you need to say who?
Do you want?
Or no?
It would be split between Doug and Eller. Um, I can't see, please just sit back there.
Please, uh, Luke.
And?
Luke.
Luke Snyder.
Luke.
And equally three ways, right?
Equally, minus the one cent.
Who gets the one cent?
Who seconded it?
You seconded it?
I did, yeah.
Okay. Alright, any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, say nay. Motion carried unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Uh, construction in the right of way.
Uh, yeah, we have a couple of, uh, applications that need to be, uh, approved for work within the Kasoot County Road Department's, uh, Kasoot County Road right of way. Uh, the first would be from Interstate Power and Light, uh, they are rebuilding and converting electric lines to twenty-five thousand, uh, twenty-five KV operation, twenty-five thousand volts, uh, installing underground and removing overhead at multiple spots within the county, which is part of the map there. I would recommend that the board would approve of this request.
Is there a reason there's that red circle kind of off to the left, there's, it looks like a?
I don't know how that was put in or left in.
Okay, I just didn't know if there's something special with those or not? 'Cause that's all the purple areas, right? That would be, so they have multiple sites of work?
Right, that might be some, there's highway, there's highway right of way that they are impacting as well, and I don't know if that's a reference to that tile, and I'm, I'm not sure.
Okay, just curious. Anything else on this one, or, or is it entertain a motion?
Can we? I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion on the floor, is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carried unanimous. Next one?
The next one again is Interstate Power and Light, and this is for, um, Gina Helmers, who's getting electricity, uh, to a new building site, uh, up in, uh, section thirty-one of Bird Township, so they'd be crossing underneath two hundred eighty Street for service. Uh, again, I would recommend that the board would approve of this request.
Is, I got one, yeah, I got one for the water line, but I don't see one for electric for their?
Is it, is it on the Interstate Power and Light, the last two pages, the last three pages of the, same files?
Same files, roll them out.
Oh, yep, yep.
I would move to approve, guy.
Okay, I will second that, is there any discussion?
Yeah, did they already do the water through there, or are they gonna try doing that at the same time?
It's already been put in.
Yes, okay.
She maker was doing that, Interstate Power Light would be doing that, so, uh.
So it is a separate?
Two separate.
Two separate permits, though, yep. Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carried unanimous. Motion carried unanimous.
And then the, uh, next one would be the water line for Shane and Gina, Gina Helmers. Uh, this work we did give a verbal on, so this would just be the board supervisors formally approving.
Yeah, we already talked about that.
Yes.
I'll move to approve.
Okay, is there a second? I'll second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carried unanimous. Alright, then, is that all of them there, Doug?
Uh, we do have one, uh, Lennon Brandt has been visiting with us. Uh, Lennon has been, over some years, putting in some private tile, and he would like to extend that private tile into section twelve of, um, this would be Sway Township.
Yep.
Uh, he would be crossing four hundred fortieth Street according to our, uh, policy. We have an application, uh, that Lennon has, he's getting all the paperwork. Uh, my question to the board, does the board have any concerns if Lennon would get this in? Uh, he's having Zach Colash would be the, or excuse me, Zach Lubenthal would be the contractor doing the work if, uh, if any kind of a, if a verbal was given to them.
Do we have all the paperwork?
We do not yet, we would not allow that, but if they would get it in and wanna do the work, does anybody have any pre, any concerns with that?
No, I have talked to Lennon about this a couple times, so I, I was aware of what he was working towards.
Then I need. Need your signature there, Kyle. And then Kyle and Tammy on that one, and that does need to be notaried.
Which one's this one for?
This is the Helmers water line.
I'll go get my notary.
I, I'm a notary, so I'll just take care of it. Alright, thanks.
Thank you. And that's it for the right of way?
Yes, that's all the construction in the right of way we have.
Perfect.
Uh, we are having a safety meeting, Saturday, the Road Department, Friday, the fifteenth, out at the Nature Center. Uh, we're actually gonna start it a little bit later, let the men get a little bit of work done in the morning. Uh, so we're gonna start around eleven for that. Uh, still been asked, flexible benefit enrollment is going on. Does the board have any plans to change any of the health insurance options, uh, deductible for employee contribution? Uh, if the board could give any kind of a indication for that? The Road Department would appreciate it.
Kinda indicated where I was at last week.
I don't have, I don't have anything new.
Okay.
Okay, construction, uh, the bridge down by Dana Arndorfer's deck got poured last week. Uh, it is curing, uh, they will start stripping when strength is, uh, given, and we will, uh, then they'll pour, uh, their bear, their barrier rail and get, uh, guardrail installed and everything will be going on. Uh, we are planning to replace, or we are repairing another culvert on B fifty-five, uh, near the, uh, east fork of the Dwyane River, right to the west of Irvington. Uh, we are also tomorrow, tomorrow, if the weather allows, uh, by Brad Preub's on the Bodenholtaten Road, we will be, um, replacing the culvert there. Uh, we're working on the FEMA disasters, getting things going on that. Our men continue to work on the roads, uh, pulling in some shoulders, um, maintaining roads and mowing. We have four total, uh, positions open right now. Bancroft and Sway, or excuse me, we've had a person that is going to transfer to Bancroft. We have advertised for Sway City and advertised for Laverne. Uh, we also have an employee from Titanca that resigned, and it does appear that we have a, an employee that'd like to transfer from that shop, so we are getting another, um, advertisement, will go out later this week. Uh, and I think that's gonna be at the Lakota shop. And we also may have another person transferring to Sway City, so we'll see how that's going to go, but, uh, we have four total openings.
So you're gonna have two vacancies in Tyke, yeah?
No, none in Tyke.
One transfer.
One transfer?
One tran, one transfer to fill the opening on Tyke. Uh, that's all the rope, uh, that I have right now, and I don't have any, uh, other discussion on zoning, uh, transfer station or insurance.
Doug, why are you here? Did you wanna talk about the city consent agreements on the Buffalo Township renovation?
Certainly can, sure.
Um, so I, I sent you guys a kind of a spreadsheet of where we are with those consent agreements. Um, after we talked with Amy on Friday, I think she sent out an email, um, to work on those, needed those back. Um, that's why we didn't schedule anything further today on the Buffalo Urban Renewal, I believe. Um, is cause we need to have those consent agreements back or know if we're not getting them back or not. So I don't know, Doug, are you anticipating doing that next week, if we have them all back?
Yeah, that was Amy's, um,
suggestion.
To, that was my understanding with Amy is that, that ordinance, uh, that, uh, plan won't be approved.
Yeah, so that'll be, if we have those all in, then that will be on the agenda.
And it looks like we've got yeses from everyone that's been received except Wesley.
Yep.
Yeah, we, we're still waiting for a couple, I know Doug's going to a meeting tonight to answer any last minute questions. I haven't heard back from Corwith yet. I think that's.
Have you heard anything from Fenton or Sway City, those were both blank?
Doug had.
Sway City indicated that they were concurring.
Okay.
Um, Fenton, I believe, is going to concur this week.
Okay.
They all had their meetings.
What was Wesley's concern? You'd have to ask them, I guess. They just indicated that they.
They didn't say why, they just said it didn't pass.
Okay. Alright, sounds good, anything else for that topic?
Well, we will be removing, um, I don't have a map in front of me, but I think there was one project that was within the, uh, two mile radius of Wesley, so.
Yep.
That, uh, project will be amended to show that it's not gonna be, funds for incremental financing will not be used on.
Okay, yep.
And we get things checked, Doug.
All the extensions will be good.
Okay, so do you wanna go back to the awarding?
Yes, this would be awarding, this is a resolution. This would be a motion second to approve the following resolution to award contract, local i, contractor ID, local contract ID LFM dash B six seven eighteen zero six double dash seven X dash five five, Cassoot County Resolution. Whereas the Cassoot County Board of Supervisors herein referred to as the board believes Bridge Replacement Project, LFM B six seven one eight zero six double dash seven X dash fifty-five, hereinafter referred to as the project is in the best interest of Cassoot County, Iowa, and the residents thereof. The project is defined as a bridge replacement project located on the west line of section eighteen Wesley Township, and whereas the board has sought appropriate professional guidance for the concept and planning for the project and followed the steps as required by the Code of Iowa for notifications, hearings, and bidding and letting. And whereas, the board finds this resolution appropriate and necessary to protect, preserve, and approve the rights, privileges, property, peace, safety, health, welfare, comfort, and convenience of Cassoot County and its citizens. All as provided for in and permitted by section three thirty-one point three zero one of that Code of Iowa. And it is therefore resolved by the board to accept the bid from Godversen Smith Construction Company in the amount of six hundred thirty-six thousand five hundred sixty-eight dollars and sixty cents, and awards the associated contractor the same. Be it further resolved that all other resolutions or parts of resolutions in conflict with this resolution are hereby repealed. If any part of this resolution is adjudged invalid or unconstitutional, such education shall not affect the validity of the resolution or action of the board as a whole or any part thereof not adjudged invalid or unconstitutional. This resolution shall be in full force and effect from and after the date of its approval as provided by law, and be it further resolved by the Board of Supervisors of Cassoot County, Iowa, that after receiving the next necessary contract documents, including but not limited to the contractor's bond and certificate of insurance, Kyle Stecker, the chairperson of the Board of Supervisors for Cassoot County, Iowa, be and is hereby designated, authorized, and empowered on behalf of the Board of Supervisors of said Cassoot County to exec, to execute the contracts in connection with the aforementioned awarded construction project left for this county. Uh, this is dated November twelve, twenty twenty-four.
And I don't remember if you're at the resolution numbers, eleven, twelve, twenty-four, zero, one? Is there any questions or comments on this? Otherwise, I would entertain a motion. Motion by Jarks, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Matt. Any discussion on the motion? Roll call vote, please.
Plath?
Yes.
Jarks?
Yes.
Uh, Whakter?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Stecker?
Yes. Motion carries unanimous.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you guys.
Thanks.
On the Krail property, thank you for your time and consideration.
You need us to sign that resolution?
Yes, I'm sorry.
That's okay. That's alright.
There you go.
So, thank you.
Thanks.
Alright, we have discussion with our auditor and board discussion left.
Okay, so, um, tomorrow, the campus of the election is gonna be at nine o'clock AM here in the boardroom. Um, because we do have some provisional ballots, they're allowed to have till noon today to take care of those provisional ballots. Um, and, um, because we do have some trying to get that done, have the absentee board come in, get those to the machine, get all our paperwork updated, trying to do it today is just not gonna work, so. Gonna do it tomorrow morning at nine o'clock, because the holiday Iowa code says that we can, um, hold it tomorrow as well. So we'll have the campus tomorrow morning at nine o'clock. I know, um, Jack and Roger won't be able to attend, so, um, I do need the three of you to be there in the morning to have that.
No sick days.
Um, I did write down some fun numbers comparing elections, we did set a record this year. We had two thousand one hundred and thirty-four people vote at the counter or curbside here at the auditor's office, so, um, that, in twenty twenty, which was probably a record number, they had one thousand four hundred and eighty-two, so we were over six hundred more people in our, outside of our office this year, so, yeah. So that's, that, that's a huge number, um, uh, ladies worked their tails off, um, and everything seemed to go really smoothly. Um, we did not beat the number we had for total voters, this year we had eight thousand four hundred and sixty, in twenty twenty, we had eight thousand six hundred and thirty-three, close, um.
Which was probably a record at the time with absentee votes.
So we've had great turnouts, considering we have eleven thousand registered voters, you know, somewhere in that eleven thousand, that's a really good turnout, so, we're very proud of that and, and happy to see that, so, um. So then you'll see all the numbers tomorrow, next week.
Thank you to you and the rest of your office for all the work you put into that.
Thank you.
Kaylee and I were gone for a few days over the elections, so we came in, voted early and, and stood in line for probably forty-five minutes to, to come up to the counter, so I know it, that was a lot.
Yeah, well, thank you, if you wouldn't mind telling the ladies in the auditor's office, that would be great, because they would, they would appreciate that. Um, next week, on the nineteenth, we have a public hearing for PAK one at ten o'clock here in the boardroom. Don't forget, this Friday is Maureen Albert's, is it this Friday, right? Retirement party?
Yep, fifteen.
Yep, um, over at the Election Center, from ten, yeah, ten to twelve thirty, okay. So that's this Friday, don't forget about that. Um, we talked about that urban renewal thing. And then I did wanna talk, I made a note about scheduling, um, budget workshops. We have had some outside agencies contact me about scheduling their budget allocations. Um, so, um, I'm thinking about doing it the first week in December. I also wanted to know what you thought about having the compensation board meeting the last week in November, which would be the Monday or Tuesday before Thanksgiving.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Okay.
Yeah, I'd say that'd be good. And after the election, I did reach out to Howard and Amber both as, um, elected supervisors that'll be joining the board, so that if we do get anything, um, set for budget workshops, we'll try and coordinate with them and stuff as well, so.
Okay.
Don't wanna.
It'd be important, though, not to make any decisions that are permanent until after January first, because it's their budget that they're gonna be dealing with, so I don't think Jack and I should have a lot of input on some of the things in the budget.
And I did tell them, I mean, I have full expectation of allowing them to ask questions or give input, just the same as any other board member, even prior to January first, because technically they wouldn't be sworn in, but it'd be good for everybody to start on the same page, so. I mean, we all know we're, we don't make decisions prior to January anyway, prior to the budget being going on, but I think it'd be good to have a well-rounded conversation with everybody involved whenever we start them, so.
What, you know how many dollars you're gonna start with? Same as last year. Basically.
Potentially, roughly, yeah.
Yeah, so, you're gonna have to have some idea of what you're gonna cut, so. Do we have any idea what the insurance premiums are going to go up?
No, they won't have those numbers for us till January.
Yeah, that's always the bad thing, timeline, I mean, we've tried to rush them.
Not just, not just health insurance, but, you know, your property insurance.
Cause that went up thirty percent.
Thirty percent last year, right.
Usually we don't get those until December or January, too, and.
Yeah, those are gonna be some of the bigger numbers that we can't control.
Yes.
And you were thinking maybe starting the first week in December?
For?
For budget workshops.
For the outside ones, that just come in and they present in the morning or whenever, that's what I was thinking, and then as far as the rest of them, I, I don't know, I mean, you tell me what you guys are thinking.
Well, s, will we even have a meeting on the twenty-fourth with Christmas Eve, I assume, right?
We're off that, so we're closed.
Yeah, so we won't, we won't have on the twenty-fourth or the thirty-first, so I would think we should probably have budget workshops the first three weeks in December. Um, maybe even, I don't know if we can. Um, maybe even, I don't know if we can look at some general numbers, just kind of as a board and elected supervisors before that, I don't know, but-
We won't even have our numbers done for, I mean, we have to start working evaluations here and get those numbers to the state. I mean, we, that process hasn't even started yet, so.
When do you have them done by?
Usually December sometimes.
Okay. Yeah, well, I know like for Amber's schedule, she needs to potentially reschedule certain people that already have appointments booked with her and stuff, so. If we, if we are looking at scheduling things those first three Tuesdays in December, I can let her know that and kinda coordinate.
As far as discretionary funds, they can all come in along.
Yeah.
I mean, you're not gonna make a decision on that anyhow until after the first of the year.
Right.
What you actually do, so. Did we get that out of the way?
Do you have any thoughts or questions, Howard?
On timing?
Yeah, any?
I, I, no, my schedule's not worked that far. No, no, I, uh-
Okay.
No.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm available, I think I'm available.
Okay.
Amber's got some business runs.
Yeah, so I mean, to be courteous to her on her schedule and stuff, I mean-
You better work it out a little bit.
If we're, if we're looking at doing stuff those first three weeks, if we let her know now, she can start rearranging her schedule if needed on any of those.
Well, if we get a few things out of the way in December too, it wouldn't be all bad being, I've got a child due the first week of January, so. I might miss a couple days.
Yeah.
Depending on how things-
I think you'll be excused though.
Depending on how things play out.
No excuses.
And we will, we would have virtual options if you were at home and wanted to listen in or whatever too.
Yeah, that's true too.
We can, legally, we have to have that available, but we can make that work. Um, so, okay, we can kinda tentatively plan on that and-
Yeah, cause our first meeting of the year will be the second, which is on Thursday.
Thursday, yeah, I was thinking that'd be Thursday.
Cause you have to meet at the first business day, that's not a holiday.
Right.
So, that will be the second, but Thursday.
Yeah.
So, that-
It'll be the big, big first meeting of the year then.
Yeah. Alright, well, um, and with our newly elected supervisors, if we can get them the packet and stuff, when that gets sent out too, that would probably be good information for them to be able to see prior to, yeah, our board packet.
Oh, okay.
Cause don't we send that to some other people too, when agenda packet, yeah, so.
I wasn't sure what you were talking about, like HR packet or what packet you were talking about.
Our weekly information packet.
Yeah, okay, I get you.
So, um, obviously Amber's familiar with what's in it, but this would be new for Howard, so, for our packet anyway. So, otherwise, anything else that you had?
Nope, that's it.
Okay. Jack?
I, of course, we had a meeting last, I didn't have, but I said, um, did you get the information for the temporary sanitary empty? The Nellis?
She called, yes, and I'm trying to remember, it was during election week, I think, and so there was a lot going on. But um, yes, I think I gave her his number and she was gonna get ahold of him directly, so. And I haven't heard anything back, so.
She had, there were some reports that needed to be filled out, so.
Yep, she did call, I, I think it was during election week and yeah, I talked to her briefly, she was gonna get ahold of him directly.
Perfect, anything else, Jack?
Uh, no, that's it.
Roger?
Um, just drainage, a whole bunch of that, and I got my ICAU meeting on Monday.
Okay. Josh?
No board meetings.
Carter?
Uh, same, just drainage. I do, just for the board's information, I, I mean, we're gonna talk about it next week, but as far as what Mr. Casey was referring to this morning, it's a very cut and dry situation there. We have the maps for the private tiling going on there and, and the map, county map, where the boundary is there. Prior to the current landowner owning that piece, there was tile already run outside the district, into the district, and they are simply splitting the lines. And so, we are annex, we're gonna be annexing them in in the near future, and they're all aware and on board with that. Um, and as far as the pond goes, that's not a county facility, I'm not sure how we're gonna be able to impact that. But the water draining into DD one sixteen there, all goes west and south. Um, it, it does not flow except the eight acres in the corner. So, that's, that was kinda what was in question. There's about thirty to forty acres there on northeast corner of that farm that is not in the drainage district. It runs along the road and kinda runs a little bit south, a little bit in the corner. Um, all of that, except for those maybe eight-ish acres in the corner, already draining west and south. The lines that are already run there, according to the tile map, there, there's, it's already tiled pretty extensively there.
Private tile.
Private tile, correct. Um, so, but they are, the current landowner and previous landowner, whoever, has been essentially getting pre-drainage for quite a long time, um, outside the district thereof, however much outside that eight acres in the corner, cause that little bit goes north. Um, so, they're aware now that they need to be annexed in, they're fine with it, they want that. So, they're willing to work with us. I thought, I visited the Tyler um, about this and he said, yeah, that's, that's fine. Be pretty cut and dry and we'll annex them, so they paid their fair share. So, that's kinda what's going on there.
The system's been overloaded for Casey, then that needs to be addressed, that's either-
It doesn't flow into what Casey farms though. It's across the road from him, but it doesn't flow directly into any of his property. Um, there, it all goes west and south. Galen Farms, north and east.
North and east.
Right.
Well, and he was talking about two different situations.
There was two different situations there, so the pond he's talking about, that goes into his and that affects him. That does affect his drainage, but-
And I think that's another question he's filed out, was it, is that a converted wetland?
Yeah, and I don't know, I mean, it's-
If they tiled it without, and-
You mean the pond there?
Yeah, if that was, was, if that was converted wetland, then that could throw them out of, I mean, that could be very serious.
That's, that's not our problem to figure out though.
Well, but it's still, it's a, something that needs to be filed out.
But isn't that outside a drainage district bounds anyway?
It's not in the-
It's not, it's not in the district, there's no county tile that runs from it.
So-
The, the point is-
Well, if you tiled it and it was converted wetland, then they're going against, it's still-
It was, it was farmed before, it just, that whole area never produced anything, which is why they put the pond there. The legalities of it, I question some things there too. It's a really unique, I mean, you probably do come by it, maybe there in the Galworth Road tor- as you get towards Laverne, Sexton Blacktown. I mean, it's, I don't know where there's another one like that around, um, intriguing idea, but-
Is that that sport?
Correct, yeah.
Yeah, I've seen that on maps, yeah, I was kinda curious as to how that can be.
I don't think any of that has anything to do with drainage district, so.
Well, that's just it.
And, and if it, yeah, if it doesn't, I, I don't know what conversation we're even gonna have about it because it's not our jurisdiction to worry about. If it, if he's outside of the compliance with the farm program, that's for the FSA office to worry about.
The only thing that's ours is, he is putting new tile into the, bringing water into the drainage district with new tile. If he's already had tile in there, that's not our, per se, our problem because that was done prior, probably before any of us sat here. But the new tile going into the district is our problem, and we have other people that have tiled into districts.
Which is why we need to annex.
Which is why we need to annex in and they have to pay. So, we're gonna have to handle this very carefully, and they're gonna have to pay to come into the district, I, I-
And they're aware of all that.
They are aware.
Yeah, and they're, they're fine with all that too.
As long as we're on the same page here, that they're gonna pay to come into the district and the new tile are going to be recorded as coming into the district.
Right.
That wasn't previously there.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'm fine, that's good.
Well, and even lightly knowing about the situation, we do have others in this county, which I think you're referring to, where they did the tiling across district lines and didn't come here and ask permission, so, and are fighting other pieces of that. But um, this one already having tile bringing the water the same direction, increasing the quantity of lines out there doesn't change where the water's going, just changes the flow potentially, but we-
Changes the capacity of the district, so it hasn't been-
Well, no, because when, and I, I've heard every engineer talk about this, but when they do the reclassification, they figure that every acre is utilizing the district facilities to the maximum benefit they possibly can. So, if you and I are neighbors and I pattern tile my field every twenty feet and you pattern tile every hundred feet, or, and the next person doesn't do any, for the re- purposes of reclassification, it's all the same. So, they do need to be annexed into the district, whether that's voluntary or involuntary, doesn't matter because those acres are bringing their water that way, so they should be paying. But if we have a landowner that's not fighting the process, it's very easy to do a voluntary annexation, which is what we have done previously. So, I think it's fairly simple paperwork, we just need to go through the process and treat everybody the same.
The only problem is, it shouldn't have been done before the tile was put in.
Ideally, yes, but it's not the first one that's been-
No, I know, but you know-
We'll still get the same result here, but yeah.
The only problem is, is we have somebody else that-
That didn't follow the process?
Right, didn't follow the process and we are-
Actively dealing with that?
Dealing with that, and it makes it tougher if we don't have the same rules for everybody.
Right. So, I think, I think the important piece there, which you did highlight, is the rules are the same for everybody. It's just when the paperwork gets done.
Okay.
And um, whether they're cooperative or, or not in regards to getting the paperwork done, so.
But they're, they're very cooperative and I, yeah, I like to say, I've been talking to Tyler. I don't know where he got the seven o'clock last Friday night thing. I was at a wedding, playing for a wedding rehearsal in Pomeroy, actually, but that, that's neither here nor there. But uh, yeah, but we'll discuss that next week and, and I should have more information with Tyler by then too and getting things squared away there, so.
Okay, cause yeah, I mean, even like PAC one, when we had the reclass for that, there were people that said, oh, we tiled this way already, and it was years and maybe decades ago. So, I mean, once we have that information, we've pretty consistently incorporated that. Um, it's just not always done at the, prior to construction like it should be, but, yeah.
That's all I got.
Okay.
And yeah, again, thank you to Tammy's office for the election and thank congratulations to Howard and Amber on joining us on January.
Yeah. Yeah, I did not have any other board meetings that way, but yeah, I did send Tammy and all of her office staff a appreciation message on election day. I, I know, from, from what I had heard, it went pretty good, so. Um, glad we had the voter turnout and participation that we did as well.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was on election day and that was, went smooth, that was in and out.
Yeah.
Pretty quick, so, yeah.
Did you get that?
Processes done well.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Alright, anything else? Howard, you got any world news for us?
Or no?
Alright, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So would I.
Is there a second, Jarks? Any discussion? All of us in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. We adjourned at eleven-